I will do that as well. And now if you would join me in a moment of silence, please. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. All right, the first item on our agenda this evening is program presentation, the school's safety audit report. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Reich, and this evening we'd like to brief the board on our safety audit report that we've conducted. And Mr. Hill will take us through the highlights of that report and then be open to answering questions that you may have. Mr. Hill.
So, thank you, greetings, Dr. Cavassos, President Reich, and Board. Again, we are here to discuss the school's safety audit report and some of the legal requirements behind that and a little bit more detail into it. And this report was put together by Chris Gent in Security Department and James Smith, the Security Manager, in collaboration with my office and all of the campuses and other departments across the district. And so, this is an old Senate bill, Senate Bill 11 from a few years ago, that requires basically each district to have a multi-hazard emergency operations plan. And in that plan, they look at four areas. District employee training, mandatory school drills, coordination with local first responders, and then just an audit of how you're doing with regard to security across the district. And this bill requires for once, at least every three years, that the district shall conduct this audit. And then, once we conduct this audit, we are to present it to the Board for what we're here for tonight. So, in that first area, in the area of district employee training, these are just a few of the highlights of some of the training that we do annually to promote safety with our employees. And one of them is the promotion of the See Something, Say Something campaign. And we do that across our campuses with campus leadership and promoting that. The other big one is training that we conducted with the Arlington Police Department for lockdown drills. And that's the five S training that we train all of our staff and our students with regard to going into lockdowns. Then we go into some staff training with MANT training for selective staff members, CPR, first aid training, and the use of the AEDs. Again, this is just a kind of a brief summary of the trainings that are responsive to that first bullet and the requirement. Regarding the mandatory school drills, three drills, three types of drills that are required. One is a fire drill, and we have to have one every month that there's 10 or more school days. The lockdown drills, we have one every 12 weeks in school. And subsequently, we had a lockdown drill at one of our elementary campuses not long ago. And in the debriefing in that meeting with the first responders from the Police Department and the Campus Administration, unsolicited, they said that's one of the best drills that we've, that they've ever been a part of. And they do those on a regular basis. And the kids and the staff did an excellent job of responding and basically putting those five S's into action. The severe weather drills, there's one every 12 weeks for a total of three. And all of these drills are in a repository that's constantly monitored by the Security Department. And when campuses are meeting the deadlines or close to or not getting them, they get those follow-up emails and support to make sure that we're doing the right thing. Here is just a brief summary of the drills for 2016-17. You see all drills. The blue is what was required. The yellow or green there is what we actually did, and the red is what drills that were missed. And there are very few drills missed. Generally, when a drill was missed, it was, a campus had it scheduled on the last day of the month. And for some reason, inclement weather or something, and then we weren't able to get it done. And so, they would do it the next day, but when it comes down to what it says you didn't meet the requirements. So, we had to record those and then have corrective actions or supports with the campuses to meet those requirements. The local coordination with law enforcement, I've got to give a good shout out to the Arlington Police Department. They're very collaborative with us and work with us in our schools. And we do security assessment team training with them. School resource officers are on our secondary campuses, and they respond to our elementary campuses when necessary. We have monthly or quarterly, wouldn't say monthly, maybe quarterly tabletop exercises where we just get around and throw out a scenario. And we talk about how we respond to that and who does what and how we make sure that we are being student-centered and staff-centered with safety in priority. And then, we provide those, select members of those teams with access to our buildings, whether it be keys or the badges to get in in case of emergency and we go into lockdown. And then, there's a lot of coordination with the tactical response team that Mr. Smith, as a former police officer, kind of coordinates that and makes sure that we're on the cutting edge with regard to that. The security audit itself, as I said, it's required every three years. It's conducted by our AISD security team. And they've gone through some very extensive training with the Texas School Safety Center and the Institute for Criminal Justice Studies. We send them to that training every year. I mean, lately, we have, the last couple of years, and they've gotten and coming back and implemented that training to make sure that we are on the cutting edge of making sure that our campuses are safe. Some of the things that we look for in the security audit are perimeter security, unlocked doors, whether it be interior, exterior, classrooms, offices, storages, fire hazards, making sure that the windows are covered appropriately. The five S is what we really, really press when looking for, making sure that the campuses are aware and knowing what to do to respond in the case of an emergency. And then, just general evacuation procedures, and then staff training. A summary of that report is given to every principal at the end of the year with the, I don't want to call it a grade, but it's an assessment piece. And we give them, I think it's a 12-page report. And we talk about what their positives were and what the areas of opportunities were. And we support them in meeting or improving for those areas. Here's an example, I took the campus name out of it, but here's an example of page one of this campus. Had an 89% success rate. 259 of the 291 areas were met. And those areas that weren't met, it was something that potentially went back and it was resolved later or at the time that the assessment was done, it wasn't ready and available to the team that was assessing. So, we did follow up and make sure that they were meeting the marks on those. Other security measures, just in general across the district, installation and monthly testing of the airbox system. That's in all facilities. That's in emergency communications in case we lose power across all district facilities. We're able to communicate with the campuses. Updates, upgrades of security campuses, of security cameras across the district to increase coverage, improvement of quality, and retention of the data. The alertus notification system is another notification system that we're testing in some of the buildings. And we'll try to get it full-fledged once we work out all the potential issues with it. An ISS 24/7 incident management system for just managing incidents and drill reporting. And then, just training efforts and de-escalation and verbal judo with our security officers, some administrators, and campus and department staff. What you'll see on the left is an example of some of the analog cameras. And on the right are the more of the IP cameras. And you can just kind of see a little, it's a huge difference, may not be shown as well on this image. But when you look at the actual camera, you can see the change of the better quality. And again, we can keep the data, and it's a lot easier to get to in the new system as a result of the bond. And this is an example that we didn't have in every one of our campuses during the last security audit that we've now installed in every one of our campuses and facilities. And we test this airbox system. Think it's consistent with what the city does. And I think it's on the first Tuesday or Wednesday of every month that we send this across all facilities to test to make sure that we are able to communicate in the event of an emergency. And with that, we'll open it up to any questions that you may have regarding the security audit report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hill. We do have some questions from trustees, Mrs. Mays.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Thank you, Mr. Hill. I had a couple of questions about staff training. So, when we do the staff training, do we do that on campus? Is it done during school hours? Is it free? Is it open to all of the staff?
The answer to those questions is yes, it's free. It's done generally in school hours. It's open to all staff. It's done periodically throughout the year on some campuses. But it's a part of that initial training with the first of the year. And anytime there is a drill that takes place, we do a debriefing. And then, we take whatever we saw good and opportunities in those drills. And we give them back to the campuses. And they may, in some, I know in some cases, they do retrain after those drills, especially when there are some marks that were missed.
Okay. And then, also for the staff training for like CPR.
Yes.
When you say staff, does that also include like our bus drivers? Does that include our cafeteria workers?
That's a part of their bus drivers. And I don't know about cafeteria workers, I'd have to check on that. But I do know that the bus drivers go through, that's a part of their training, yes.
And then, you talked about for the audits, if things were missed, you gave an example of like inclement weather on a day that maybe the drill was scheduled. Is there any kind of a requirement that would say for performing a drill, maybe it would not be like maybe the last week, the last three days of a month? In addition to that, whatever those circumstances were, I know, I think you just used weather as one example. But are any of those situations that may happen where it's missed, any, would there be anything different in a real-time situation that might happen during those same reasons that caused them to miss?
So, yes, it is likely. We try to provide the principals with maximum flexibility on the scheduling of the drills because there are hundreds of things that you all know are going on on the campus. And we don't want to put them in a box, so to speak. There's been some conversation about when, for instance, if a fire drill and we're getting up to the last week of the month and they haven't had it, they're getting calls, they're getting emails, they're saying, hey, where are you on the fire drill? We noticed that it's not logged in. And many times, it's done, but they just haven't logged it in. But there are some times when they say, okay, I've got it scheduled, and we'll, you know, take them for the word that they're gonna... And the principals, they take this serious. This is not something that is, that is not a priority for them. Safety and security is very important to them. In those times when it does happen, it's scheduled on the last day of the month and raining or whatever, or something happens, we just try to deal with them and make sure that we're supporting them and scheduling earlier the following month.
Okay. And yes, we do take safety very seriously. And I think we should because unfortunately, if you don't, the only time you realize that is if something really does happen. Then it's too late. So, I just want to make sure that I did hear you say that I will use inclement weather as an example to where if there was inclement weather and a real security issue did happen where they would have to evacuate as they would with a drill, would the drill procedures be the same as if there were no inclement weather? In other words, if they've never practiced, what it might be like if it is storming and lightning or whatever, and they truly had to leave the building?
You know, we rely heavily on the first responders with APD, and we coordinate with them. And so, if a fire drill, let's just use it, and I don't get into examples, but a fire drill in inclement weather, we're clearing the building. I think they don't have to tell us, you know, the building's on fire, it's raining, make a choice, get out in the rain. But I think when there's situations like that, we coordinate a lot with the Police Department to help us make those decisions on what's best to do.
Okay. And then, do we do any of our own audits or any other type of assessments for safety and security, more than just the three-year requirement from the state?
We do it, yes, we do it every year, yes. But we just have to report it to the Board every three years.
Okay. And then, a particular thing that you mentioned that I know I'm of great interest, and that is the training efforts and de-escalating issues that happen within the school.
Yes.
What in particular are we doing to make sure that there are individuals in place to help de-escalate fights, de-escalate maybe arguments from turning into fights? What are we doing specifically?
So, there's a two-piece, I think, response to that. And one is just the everyday general expectation of building positive relationships with students, such that there should be some person in every school that a student, if in a crisis mode, can come to. And, or a person can see a student in a crisis mode and be able to respond to that student effectively and kind of get them to de-escalate. That's just one-on-one building relationships with kids. And then, the other piece is a more technical training that I think it's October the 14th that we've got scheduled with the actual verbal judo and de-escalation training. And that is more for those severe incidents where we've got crowd control and management of large groups of students when things kind of get around. So, that's a more specific training. But in general, it's just relationships with students.
So, for the judo, who would be receiving that training? Is it a specific group? Is it?
Well, it's open to principals and assistant principals. Our security staff receives it. Their front office staff received it to work with potential aggressive visitors that may come to the campus. But it's open to all, but those specific groups have already received it or are receiving it.
And then, my last question, based on what you just said, the building positive relationships for de-escalating issues, do you see that working within our schools?
I would have to rely on more conversations with principals to answer that directly. At my level, I don't see, you know, that direct interaction. But anecdotally, just in conversations, I would say that I've heard a lot of good reports from people that are campuses that are dealing with students with, you know, challenges.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mays. Mrs. Hudson.
Thank you, President Reich. Back to page two of the slides. What is MAND? Am I pronouncing that right? MAND training?
MANT training?
Yes.
It's a specific restraint training for, we'll say, for aggressive students who may have some emotional or other behaviors that, it's a specialized training to restrain students. To keep them safe, students and staff safe, yes.
Right, so to keep everybody safe, but without putting them in a harmful situation or being overly aggressive with the student? Is that what I'm understanding? Okay.
That's correct.
First aid seems like a pretty broad category. Can you specifically tell me, within that first aid training, do our cafeteria workers and teachers get training in the Heimlich maneuver? Specifically, how to deal with epileptic seizures? I know that we keep stuff on campus for extreme allergy situations, anaphylactic shock, and asthma and that kind of thing. Is all of that within the first aid training? Or is that more specialty training that only the nurse on campus would have?
Yeah, I would have to get with the net, Minterly, who's our coordinator of nurses, or some of our athletic trainers who actually do that. First aid training has changed a lot since I've taken it. But there is the basic life support and life preservation of life until the first responders can get there.
Yeah.
That's, I think, what the biggest focus of that training is, is to keep a person alive until the first responders get there.
So, when you, yeah, because when you say first aid, I'm thinking either CPR or, you know, staunching bleeding or something of that nature. But I know specifically, just in the last couple of years, there was a really tragic event where a young student died, not in our district, but in the cafeteria choking.
Yeah.
And anyone who has a kiddo with food allergies, which I do, I mean, you just can't control everything. And I know sometimes that goes from zero to emergency situation really quickly. And if you don't have, if the nurse is the only person trained on campus, I guess I just would really appreciate a little bit of follow-up on that to know how close is any one student at any time to someone who is trained to deal with choking, asthma, allergy, things of that nature that don't necessarily fall under, I think, what I think of as traditional CPR and first aid. And then, can you tell me a little bit more about what verbal judo is? Because that sounds awesome.
It is truly a verbal de-escalation tactic.
Okay.
Where people are, our staff is trained to de-escalate situations. If I could give an example, I was at a football game, a junior high football game, unfortunately. And I saw it in action. It was a very volatile parent that was getting antsy with the coaches and the officials. And I'm just sitting back, and I saw our security guard come. And before I knew it, that angry parent was having a laughing conversation with the security guard. And it was based on the security guard's training and the approach to de-escalate. And I just sat back and watched. And it was, it was training on how to take a situation and just take people down an octave and down an octave. And it works.
That's really neat. And so, is that, I guess that's for anyone who's on campus, students or parents who might be in a tough situation or anything like that?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you, that's all my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. I don't see any other further lights. I will just say thank you for the report and thank you for the clarification that this is something that is not just done as a compliance. Student safety, personnel safety, campus safety overall is our first and utmost priority. Thank you for providing this information. Mr. Smith, you're in the back of the room. Thank you for your service and your work with your staff in the district. There's, I think Ms. Mays said it, it's, that practice makes perfect. Practice makes just automatic process happen when those situations arise. And that's what this is all about. So, it's great to know that all of these things are occurring. And I'm sure that there's probably a number of individuals that think, oh, boy, here we go again. But the reality is, all I've ever heard in my history is, but when you have to actually put that into action, that's where it's an automatic behavior. And that's when people go, wow, I'm really glad that we did those things all the time. So, thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, next, we have administrative appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Reich. I'd like to recommend that the Board appoint the individual discussed in closed session for assistant principal for Seguin High School.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Hudson, a second by Mr. Hibbs. Seeing no lights indicating discussion, please vote. All trustees vote in the affirmative. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Reich. And our candidate is not able to attend tonight, but we do want to announce her. And then, she will be brought back to a later Board meeting for appropriate introduction. But tonight, we announce the new assistant principal for Seguin High School, Ms. Dawn Stroyeski. And Ms. Stroyeski will join us at a future Board meeting for an introduction.
All right, excellent. Thank you, looking forward to that. All right, so next, we have a public hearing on our agenda. So, at this point, I will call our, open our public hearing on the turnaround implementation plan for the fourth year improvement required campus and selected elements of the first year improvement required campuses. Peach Elementary, Short Elementary, and then, fourth year being Wemish. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Reich. And this evening, we'd like to present information about these campuses and their improvement plans. And I'll like to introduce Michelle Wilmisonato. She'll get us started with kind of the overview of our plans and what to expect.
President Reich, Dr. Cavassos, members of the Board. I want to first thank you for your support of all of our AISD campuses. But I want to say a special thank you to your support, for your support of our improvement required campuses. So, tonight, I will bring some brief remarks to give you an overview of the school improvement process. And then, it will be my honor to introduce the principals of Short and Peach and Wemish so that they can share their plans with you. And so, the first few slides will deal with the overview of the school improvement process. You'll see the achievement standards for the 16-17 school year. These standards were in place, and not meeting these standards resulted in the improvement required status or the continued improvement required status. We'll also see the expectations for IR campuses from the state of Texas. And then, the outcomes if the expectations are not met. Finally, you'll have an opportunity to ask questions and give input on the targeted elements plans and on the turnaround plan for Wemish. The Texas Education Agency provides guidance and resources to schools who are rated improvement required. Some of the processes have changed to reflect and improve, to reflect improved student outcomes. This next slide shows you the targets or the thresholds for the four state accountability indices. You had to meet these targets to meet standard. You had to meet the targets in three out of four indices. I won't read everything on the slide to you. It's got a lot of information here. But I would point out that index one, the target was 60 for all types of schools, elementary, junior, high, and high school. For index two, which deals with student progress, those targets vary. For a school to be rated met standard, you had to meet index one or two. Did not have to meet both of them, but you did have to meet index one or two. Index three deals with closing performance gaps. And then, index four, post-secondary readiness. You can see on there, the targets are adjusted for the types of schools. So, to meet standard, you had to meet three out of the four, you had to get three out of the four indices. If you, if you fail to meet, if you fail to meet the target in two or more indices, then you were improvement required. You probably know this, but over the years, these targets have increased. And you probably are also aware that we have a new accountability system coming into play. And we don't have the final word on what the targets will be moving forward. This next slide, again, has a wealth of information. I'll just speak generally about it rather than read all of it to you. System safeguards are in place to ensure that we are good schools for all students. And so, what you'll see across the top are different student groups. And then, the targets based on federal and state accountability that a school has to meet in order to meet the system safeguards. The first set of performance targets are the state, and the second set are the federal system. The federal system includes not only performance targets, but participation targets. At the bottom of the page, you'll see the graduation rate targets. So, expectations for campuses who are rated improvement required in their first year. Once the campus receives their accountability information, the first thing the principal does is create a campus leadership team. And this is composed of teacher leaders, also support personnel at the campus, and they get right to work. First thing they do is conduct a comprehensive needs assessment. They're considering not only student achievement, but also attendance data, campus culture data, leadership and human capital. The needs assessment has to be very comprehensive. The next order of business is to conduct a focused data analysis seeking to understand the root causes for the school's performance. For this school year, 17-18, the Texas Education Agency has changed slightly the process for school improvement for schools rated IR1. In the past, the schools have had to submit a full-blown targeted improvement plan in October of the year that they were rated improvement required. This year, schools are expected to identify targeted elements and strategies and then, to bring those to you in a public hearing for your approval. After approval, they then work collaboratively with the region service center consultant, the Texas Education Agency consultant, our professional service provider, who for all of our schools is Dr. Charlotte Paramore, and then, our district support, including area superintendents, to provide... And then our district support, including area superintendents, to provide support and resources. The targeted improvement plan is not actually designed and, and submitted for approval to TEA until March of the second semester that you're rated improvement required. And that's a change for this year. I think it's a good change because what it allows campuses to do is to put some things in place, these targeted elements and strategies, and then to make adjustments so that the likelihood of increased student achievement goes up. So they can make, they can make adjustments, they can try things, they can, uh, make changes. And then when the, the plan is finally developed and submitted, um, it's more likely to result in positive student outcomes. And so the next thing we would want to talk about is the X, the, um, the outcomes if expectations are not met. If the IR schools meet standard, then they do, they do not proceed to the next level of school improvement. They are, they remain monitored in the school improvement system for another year and they are supported through the, the resources, um, that I've outlined before. Region eleven service center, uh, professional service provider and district support. If they do not meet standard, then they go into year two IR. And that would include continuing the campus leadership team, engaging in the Texas academic improvement system process, engaging in the develop of, of a turnaround plan which builds upon the targeted improvement plan, but is a refinement of that plan. In year three, if they did not meet standard, they would continue the CLT, implement the turnaround plan, but this also would involve a possible hearing before the commissioner of education. In year four, continuing the, the, uh, campus leadership team, implement the turnaround plan, increased, increased agency monitoring, possible hearing before the commissioner and then additional sanctions. In year five, the board, uh, they would be, there would be a board of managers, possibly a conservator or campus closure. These are the outcomes if expectations are not met with regard to accountability. It is now my honor to introduce to you Dr. Stephanie Lee, principal of Peach Elementary School.
Good evening, President Reich, members of the board and Dr. Cavassos. Um, I stand here today as the proud principal of Eddie and Debbie Peach Elementary, sharing our data from twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, as well as our, um, plan for improving student outcomes for this year. Peach Elementary ended the year, uh, as an improvement required campus. However, I am, um, proud to say that we missed meeting the standard by one point in index three, which is closing the performance gaps. As a brand new campus, um, the economically disadvantaged population is the only subpopulation that is included in identifying the rating for that index. Um, we did not meet index one, we met index two, student progress. We missed index three by one point and we met index four. Um, so we're very confident in the team we have at Peach Elementary as well as the targeted improvement plan that we have, uh, developed for this school year. For federal accountability, Peach Elementary met system safeguards in the following areas. Hispanic math, white reading and math, and ELL math. We missed all other, uh, academic system safeguards. Last year, Peach Elementary had a mobility rate of thirty-five point sixty-five percent and the attendance rate was ninety-four point five percent. We have identified tardies as an area of focus, um, that we're monitoring weekly. Uh, and students are receiving incentives through our improvement model, uh, for getting the school on time every day. We are also using every opportunity to communicate with, um, parents, uh, via social media, our parent events and our, um, parent newsletters that are shared with them monthly. As a result of going through the targeted improvement process, the campus leadership team has identified, um, three targeted goal areas for this year. Our first goal is around writing. We want seventy percent of all students and all student groups in grade four to meet the standard on star writing. By the end of last school year, forty-four percent of our all student group met the standard. Uh, forty percent of our African-American subpopulation met the standard. Forty-seven percent of our Hispanic subpopulation met the standard. And forty percent of our economically disadvantaged subpopulation met the standard. Specific strategies that we have identified to improve in the area of writing include the following. Teachers are implementing writer's workshop, utilizing the curriculum framework for writing as well as the curriculum documents and resources. Uh, the instructional leadership team is facilitating, uh, planning days each six weeks for teachers to, uh, really dig into those curriculum documents and use their student, uh, data to plan, not just instruction, current instruction, but also intervention and enrichment for those students. The instructional leadership team is conducting focused walkthroughs in the area of writing and providing, um, coaching and targeted support based on, um, the results of the focused walkthroughs as well as the data from formative and summative assessments. Teachers are working in professional learning communities, um, every two weeks to review, uh, student data, including writing samples and planning those next steps for instruction and intervention and enrichment. And then, uh, we are engaging all students in the goal-setting process. Um, they're establishing goals on their, uh, compositions that they're writing and reflecting on their performance with their teachers. Our teachers are receiving professional development in the following areas. Um, our fourth grade teachers are specifically receiving empowering writers' training as well as job embedded coaching from an empowering writers' consultant. The instructional leadership team, um, has implemented, trained and modeled fundamental five strategies, um, for all teachers, um, that will help them in all content areas. And we're providing that coaching support through this implementation phase. Teachers in kinder through sixth grade are participating in professional learning around, um, scoring of writing and calibration of that writing, um, using the writing rubrics that are, uh, provided in the curriculum central. And then academic services is providing, um, training in the area of revising and editing for third, fourth and sixth grade teachers to prepare their students for, um, curriculum and district assessments. Um, our second goal is around reading. We want seventy percent of all of our students and student groups in grades three through six to meet the standard on reading. By the end of last school year, fifty-five percent of our all student group met the standard. Forty-nine percent of our African-American student group met the standard. Fifty-six percent of our Hispanic subpopulation met the standard. And then fifty-two percent of our economically disadvantaged student group met the standard in reading. Strategies that we have identified for this year include the following. The instructional leadership team is facilitating those, uh, six weeks planning opportunities, not just in, uh, writing, but also in reading. We're really digging into the curriculum and using student data and curriculum resources to plan instruction. Um, we're incorporating IStation data review, um, for all grade levels in our, um, bi-weekly PLCs that we have with teachers. And we're planning next steps for instruction and intervention based on the results of the data. The instructional leadership team, um, is meeting with teacher teams monthly to review data in all areas, not just IStation, but, um, our DRA developmental reading assessment, our curriculum assessments, our campus-based assessments, benchmarks. And we're, um, using that data to, again, set goals with students and meet those performance goals. And we're conducting focused walkthroughs in the area of balanced literacy, um, to ensure that teachers are providing that small group targeted guided reading instruction to meet the needs of our students during that, um, scheduled intervention and enrichment time that happens daily. We're providing professional development in the following areas for reading. Um, teachers are receiving professional learning and coaching around the guided reading framework and guided reading components. We have a core group of teachers that are being trained in balanced literacy through, um, academic services. And then the instructional leadership is again, using the fundamental five instructional strategies which, um, apply in all content areas to provide, uh, just a minimum standard of quality instruction at Peach Elementary. Our, um, last goal is around improving student culture. We want office referrals to, um, decrease by at least fifty percent this year. Uh, last year, we ended with six hundred and twenty discipline referrals. Um, and of course, our goal is to reduce that by at least fifty percent. Our strategies that we've, um, already begun to implement are teachers are receiving, um, positive behavior intervention and supports training to establish and really reinforce those common area expectations. Um, staff is incentivizing students, and this is all staff, for meeting those common area expectations. We've trained the staff in capturing kids' hearts and we're conducting, the administrative team is conducting focused walkthroughs in the area of capturing kids' hearts, PBIS, as well as just our school-wide campus discipline system that we've implemented to identify those gap areas and provide targeted support and additional coaching for teachers. Um, we're also using, um, one of our faculty meetings each month to communicate our school discipline data to teachers to, um, problem solve specific discipline scenarios that are challenges for us this year. And to also celebrate success with teachers on meeting our targets each month because we have set targets each month, um, to get to that, uh, reduction of fifty percent by the end of the school year. And that's the least amount. We hope to reduce it by many more. Um, we have trained all teachers on a school-wide intervention system and penalty system so that all teachers are, um, responding to behavior the same way. So to build that consistency with addressing behavior with students. Teachers, um, have received training and the PBIS team has, uh, written explicit lesson plans for teachers to teach and reinforce those PBIS common area expectations. Students again are being incentivized, um, through our Viking Bucks system for demonstrating those expectations in all of the common areas that we've identified as well as in the classroom. And then, uh, teachers are being incentivized for teaching and reinforcing those, um, common area and classroom expectations as well as implementing the, um, school-wide, uh, classroom and campus discipline system. We will know that we have effectively implemented all of these strategies when our teachers are modeling the writing process daily through shared writing and modeled writing with their students. And they're using, um, student products to engage students in those goal-setting conferences. And students are actually meeting the goals that they have established through those goal-setting conferences. Kinder through sixth grade students are demonstrating the writing process through the published products. And they're engaging in critical writing across all content areas, not just in the area of writing. Um, students are meeting their end-of-year goals as identified by the rubrics that we're using from our curriculum. Students in grades three through six are meeting the standard, not just on star reading, but also on the, um, formative and summative assessments that they are taking, as well as grades kinder, uh, through second, meeting their goals on IStation. Teachers are implementing the guided reading framework, using, um, many forms of data from IStation, summative assessments, uh, progress monitoring data through those daily guided reading opportunities with students. And teachers are implementing those fundamental five strategies across all content areas. And then our students are following, um, common area and classroom expectations. That concludes my part. What questions do you have for me?
Thank you very much, Dr. Lee. Uh, Ms. Walton?
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Um, yes, back to the slide on goal number three.
Yes, ma'am.
Office referrals will decrease by at least fifty percent in this school year. Um, what's the average for an Arlington Elementary School as far as referrals? Was this, was six twenty a, a lot more than anyone else or in line or what?
Yes, ma'am. The average is about half of that, which is why we went with that goal for the year.
And, um, I mean, that, that's, that's quite a chunk. I mean, that, that's, that's pretty lofty. Um, are you, uh, the strategies I, I read, are, are these new ideas or these things that you haven't done before?
Um, with PBIS, we were able to begin implementation of PBIS in the spring of last year. We, um, could not begin at the very beginning of the school year because of construction challenges and not having access to the entire building. But in the spring of last year is when we started to implement common area expectations in the hallway, restrooms, cafeteria. And because we started in the middle of the school year, we wanted to start fresh, almost with a recharge and a redo, um, this year, um, and really start strong with our students and our teachers. So we started back with the common area expectations and we're going to implement those PBIS expectations in the classroom in the spring.
Um, and the Viking Bucks and capturing kids' hearts, and those are new ideas that y'all are implementing this year?
The Viking Bucks incentive program is new this year, yes. Uh, students earn Viking Bucks, uh, in the hallway and the cafeteria and the restrooms, on the playground for following those common area expectations. And then once a month, they're able to spend their Viking Bucks.
Uh, what kind of input did you get from your staff, uh, on this goal?
Um, we actually used our PBIS team, which is made up of teachers, administrators, um, and the counselor to identify the goal. And we use the average across the district in regards to how many office referrals should a campus be getting on average. Um, so we used that team specifically to identify the goal and then we took that information back to our back to our faculty and received them further input.
Okay. Do you feel like they're on board with this idea to do?
Absolutely, absolutely. Our staff saw the need for a pretty lofty goal in the area of student culture, which is why it's been a huge focus area for us this year. We've put a lot of time, support, and training in our teachers to give them the skills they need to feel like they can address and redirect behavior, not just with their students, but any student in the building.
Well, as a former teacher, if the building doesn't have a strong discipline plan and program and implementation, it's real hard to make any improvements in the academics. So I applaud your goal and wish you very much that you are successful in this one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Mrs. Mays.
Thank you, Dr. Raish. Thank you, Dr. Lee. I have one question. You stated earlier about identifying tardies. Are you identifying tardies because the number of tardies are increasing to count four unexcused absences?
We identify tardies as our focus area because it was much higher than our attendance rate. And we figured if we could put the focus on tardies, not just with our students, but our parents, it would increase the awareness with attendance. We wanted to kill two birds with one stone, so to speak.
Good. And I really wanted to ask you that, just so everybody could be very clear on how important the relationship is between tardies and absences.
Absolutely.
So, thank you for that. Then I wanted to make two comments. My first comment is, I really liked what you said about addressing the behavior. Personally, I feel that sometimes what we really need to do is just address the inconsistency of how we define behavior. And I think that's what you're saying that y'all are looking to do, is to make sure that it's, one discipline is treated the same way throughout. So when I do one discipline in one class and I go to another class, that discipline might be, I mean, my behavior may be okay, whereas it wasn't okay, and the discipline may be different. And I really think that aligning, standardizing the way that we actually address behavior, I think will make a big difference. So I'm really going to be excited to see the results in that. And then, Dr. Lee, I just want to say thank you. Thank you. Thank all of your teachers, your staff, and your school. This is not the first time that y'all are setting goals and strategies. The only difference now is you're just having to take those strategies and goals and just target them a little bit more specific. So thank you what you are doing. My personal expectations for you and for Peach have not changed. They're high, the same way I know that your expectations and everyone in your buildings is very high, not only for your staff, but for your students. And for that reason, I know you'll be very successful. Anything you need, you know that you have the full support of the board to make sure that our students are successful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Very well said, Mrs. Mays. Couldn't agree more. Mrs. Hudson.
Thank you, President Raish. Thank you for this presentation, Dr. Lee. I can tell how much work, not just by you, but by your entire staff, has gone into this. It's very thoughtful, it's very detailed, it's very thorough. And from what I can tell, it is very focused on what are those things that you can control? Because you only have these students for a certain amount of time each day, and outside of that, there's a lot that's beyond your control that still impacts these kids. So focusing precisely on what you can control and what you can do to really increase their achievement and improve their student experience at Peach Elementary, I think is really excellent, and I commend you and your staff for that. I do have a question. I understand the need to specifically focus on what it is that y'all are doing with regards to the students, but do y'all have any soft goals on how to involve parents and families in this process? You know, if your kiddos are reading 20 minutes a night, we know that that really impacts their ability to score well on these tests and to perform in the classroom. Do you have any soft goals? I mean, you can't obviously require parents to do that, but is that part of y'all's, just sort of, school culture and what y'all are doing at the school?
It is. One thing that we've implemented campus-wide as a result of not just feedback from our data, but also from our parents, is a Viking communicator, campus-wide and all grade levels. And the purpose of implementing this Viking communicator was to increase two-way communication between teachers and parents, as well as provide all of those different ways parents can become involved in this Viking communicator that goes home daily. And it changes each six weeks because our goals, our curriculum changes each six weeks. So we're providing parents, not just with information on how they can help their child throughout this educational journey, but also to keep them informed of what we're doing at Peach. We had our first All-Pro Dads event last Friday and had 100 dads with their kids in attendance. So we are excited about the parent involvement, and we're leveraging it every chance we get.
That's good to hear. I just want to echo Ms. Mays' sentiments. We have complete confidence in you guys and your staff. I've been there, and I know y'all's heart for the students, so thank you so much for the hard work.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Hudson. Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, Dr. Lee, for this presentation. I had some more questions about goal three, and they're really more background questions for me. I was just curious if you had a sense of how you ended up with the 620 referrals and that much above the district average?
We knew going into our first year at Peach Elementary that with our incoming group of students, there was a high discipline referral average. What we did was, when we opened Peach Elementary, we built several strategies around improving student culture. We had lots of challenges implementing those strategies, but we kept forging forward, trying to improve the student culture, as well as the teacher culture. A lot of the challenges presented, not just student challenges, but also teacher challenges. So we really tried to focus a lot just on keeping the teacher morale up and teaching the curriculum. And with that being said, we had a little bit of turnover with teachers, which impacted what we were able to do socially and emotionally for our students that already had major social and emotional gaps when we opened.
Okay. So, did you, do you find that maybe some of the referrals were disproportionately made up by, you know, a small number of teachers and a small number of students? Or is this sort of a, was it kind of a global problem?
I can tell you, when we first opened Peach, the discipline referrals were widespread across the entire campus. But in looking at the data, by the end of the school year, those discipline referrals were coming from a core group of students. So that was progress in itself, because it went from being widespread to really just coming from a core group that we could really focus our efforts on.
And you mentioned teacher morale earlier. I, you know, very supportive of trying to reduce the referral rate, but, you know, I remember being back in the classroom, and at a certain point, you know, you've checked all the boxes and you've done everything you can. Are you doing anything to communicate to your teachers that, hey, at the end of the day, if the intervention strategies aren't working, you know, we're not discouraging you from writing a referral despite our goal? Is that something that y'all are doing?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, the administrative team has aligned themselves with teacher teams. For example, one assistant principal may be coaching all third-grade teachers. And part of that coaching is meeting with them every couple of weeks and talking through the challenges they're having, not just with academics, but also with discipline. And those two people brainstorming ideas to provide additional support to the teachers. So there is that two-way communication through the coaching opportunities.
Okay.
And we've strategically aligned coaches with their grade levels, and they're not the appraiser for those teachers, so that those teachers feel open and vulnerable to say, this isn't working for me, I need help.
Great. That's good to hear. I also had a couple of questions on the goals for goal one and goal two. You know, something that we have recently been discussing, even as a board, with the metrics that we look at for, you know, performance at this level, is making sure that the goals that we have are, you know, we don't want softballs, we don't want, but we don't want things that are not realistic and attainable. And the goals that are here are, you know, there's a pretty large disparity between the 2017 score and the 2018 goal. I mean, it's 70 across the board for goals one or two. So could you kind of describe how you went about choosing 70 as the goal for both goals one and two?
We're overachievers. And this is, really comes from the teachers, because they knew all of the challenges we were presented with last year. And to be able to be just one point away from meeting the standard, given all of the obstacles we faced last year, they are more than confident about being able to meet these goals. And they were really the ones that said 60% is too low.
Okay.
We want to shoot high so that we are putting ourselves in a very good position to meet the standard.
All right. Well, wish you the best of luck with that. I had one last question, and that was, looking through the data that we were provided on sort of the student population that we have at Peach. You guys have a really high transient number, way above the district average. Can you discuss a little bit what specific strategies that y'all are using to, you know, mitigate the effects of having a highly transient population of students?
One thing we're doing is really working closely with our parents as they enroll students to find out some, just some background information on the students, so that we can connect them with resources in the district. We found that we do have a very high transient population, and it's because of the resources that some of our students don't have when they come to us. So we're really connecting those students, when we talk to the parents as they enroll them, with our counselor. And our counselor is reaching out to different departments through the district to be able to provide our parents with the resources they need to be able to keep the students and the school that they originally enrolled them in.
Okay. Do you find that the students that are, the sort of, the churn of students going in and out, are they students that are coming from and going to other Arlington ISD campuses? Or are we talking mainly about, sort of, out-of-district movement?
It really is about a third of students moving from campus to campus in the ISD due to living in temporary housing. And when they have to move to a different temporary housing, they don't have the transportation to stay at Peach, and then others are moving outside of the district because they're living with relatives, or they don't have permanent housing of their own.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Mr. Hibbs.
Dr. Lee, thank you very much for your presentation. I, I want, my comments will be very brief in respect that Mr. Chapa hit on a couple of the points on goal one and goal two are very, very lofty, and I commend you for that. And I don't mean lofty in saying that I don't think that you can do it. I think that you can do it because, and this is what I want to emphasize, of what I heard you say. I heard you use terms that were, provide coaching, provide support, so, provide training, to provide leadership. You used all of the terms that said that you are bringing your campus onboard and bringing everybody in to, to challenge themselves in many ways. I mean, when you say that the culture changed in goal three of reducing a number that was that high, and say that we want to reduce it by at least 50%, you do have to have teachers onboard, because we know that there was a reason for them to submit those. So if your staff is the ones saying that we need to drive these things, and that's telling me that your leadership is in place and moving it forward, you know, I, I want to commend you for that. And I, it is a situation that we have great leadership throughout this district and leadership at the administrative level with coaching and such with that. I would, I would just encourage you just to use every resource at your hand. I mean, there, you know, there, everybody wants to pull for you, everybody wants to, wants to ensure that these kids are successful. And I know no more than what your campus is striving for. So, you know, you've got a great resource in your area superintendent, Dr. Wirtz and his staff. I know that they want to do everything to ensure your success. So, anything that we, as a board, can do, obviously, we're there, being your biggest cheerleader. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Mrs. Mays?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add one more thing. A couple of my colleagues were asking about the engagement of the community and of the parents. And I just wanted to allow you an opportunity to tell me that I'm correct, that the staff and the community and the parents have been speaking very loudly of wanting to have a PTA there at Peach Elementary.
Absolutely.
And I believe you will be starting a brand-new PTA, maybe in another week or two.
Yes, ma'am. We're looking forward to having you at Peach on Monday.
And I have to say that if you want to talk about anchoring in the community, that's definitely another way to do it. So once again, just very proud of what we see coming down the pipeline for Peach.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. So, I don't see any other lights. I have just one question on the discipline data, where, the statistic, I guess, where it is right now. With the intervention so far with the Viking Bucks, other interventions, is there any anecdotal data, or is there any, you know, trend analysis at this point in the year to see if it looks like you're going to hit the mark? Or is it too early to tell? Or I was just curious, really.
Well, it's not. Our target for the end of October is to be down 30%. We're currently at 23%, and the month is not over. So we are on track to meeting our goal.
Very good, very good. And I just echo, echo the comments of my colleagues. You're a great principal, great staff there. We appreciate everything that we've heard here this evening, and absolutely acknowledge the items in the plan, both in the development and the implementation of it, the support from district administration, and look forward to favorable updates. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, I think we move on to Short Elementary. All right.
Good evening, President Raish, board members, and also Dr. Cavassos. I'm Tracy Cross, principal of Short Elementary, and I'll be reviewing our data. And we'll start with our improvement required status. With our improvement required status, we did not make index one. The targeted goal was 60, and we were at 59. Our targeted goal for index two was 32, and we were at 31. We did meet index three and also index four. On our system safeguards, when we're looking at all students, we met standard in reading and math. For African-American students, we met in writing. For Hispanic students, we met in reading and math. For special ed students, we did not meet reading or math. However, for economically disadvantaged students, we met with math, but not reading, writing, or science. For our white students, we met with reading and math. And for our ELL students, we met in reading. we met in reading. However, or excuse me, we met in math, however, we did not meet in reading. Our school attendance is at 95.7%, and our mobility rate is 30.45. With our school attendance, we also were looking at our tardies and trying to improve that. With our PBIS and our attendance committee, they're working together to have no tardy parties and also to achieve that goal of increasing our attendance so that we can continue to have our students there in class. With our PBIS and attendance, they've set great goals for us, and we are trying to make sure that we get those goals accomplished. Our targeted elements are the three goals that we set. For our first targeted element, by April 2018, 65% of all students in all course, core areas will approach grade level standard in Index One. According to our scores last year, we were at 59 for all students, 51 for African-American students, 61 for Hispanic. Our white students hit 66, and our economically disadvantaged hit 57. Our goals for this year are 65 for each of the areas, or excuse me, each of our subgroups. And with our white students, we set 70, being that they reached that goal last year. The strategies that we're implementing this year are research-based. We're looking at our systems to monitor our data and support our teachers through corrective action plans and core subjects. Our K through two teachers, instructional coaches, and leadership will attend balanced literacy framework training. Our three through six teachers will be training comprehension toolkit training, they'll attend comprehension toolkit. Our K through six teachers will embed reading best practices in their reading blocks based on these two trainings that they've gone through. Okay, so K through six teachers will attend math solutions training and embed practices in their math block. Our math solutions that we're receiving, we have them come in, and they do a modeling, support, and coaching cycle so that we can improve on our math where it's at, and also continue working with our teachers so that we don't lose ground in math and reading based on our low areas of science and writing. Our instructional walkthrough forms created by CNI will be used to monitor and guide face-to-face discussions on instructional practices. CNI, Empowering Writers Representatives, Math Solution Representatives, and Campus Leadership will provide modeling, support, and coaching for all of our teachers. Teachers will assess students to determine weaknesses in reading and in math. Areas of need will be re-taught and assessed. Data reviews will occur bi-weekly to continue the data-driven instruction cycle. Students will track their data goals in their leadership binder and set new goals for each assessment. Our leadership binders are something new that we're doing this year. Our students have tracked their goals before. They've set goals, and they've worked for them. These leadership binders are a binder that our students have all of their core areas in. They set goals for not only their core areas, but everything that they're doing, whether it's attendance, writing, reading, math, and the social studies, everything. So they set those goals, and we work towards those goals. Our teachers keep track of those, and they monitor our students' work during conferencing that they are doing with our students. As I said, that implementation is new this year. Our teachers are using it, our students are using it. And it's a way that when we go into the classroom, we can pull those leadership binders and speak with our students and learn about their goals and make sure that we're moving towards the goals that they've set. Goal Two, April, by April 2018, 65% of all students and all student groups, Grade Four, will meet standard on Star Writing. Last year, in subgroup of all, our score was 54. African-American students scored at 65. Hispanics scored at 54. Whites scored at 54. And economically disadvantaged scored at 53. With our goals of 65, those will apply to all Hispanic, white, and economically disadvantaged, while our African-American score will be at 70. The strategies we will use for our writing will be that our teachers will receive Empowering Writers training, Writers Workshop training, and conferencing or conferring. Teachers and students will be trained on the use of holistic scoring rubric by a leadership team, which with that leaders, with that rubric, it is the rubric that our state uses. So we've trained our teachers K through six so that they can look at that rubric and look at our student compositions and score them appropriately. Implementation of campus-wide writing plans to include K six writing prompts is in effect, and we are doing that for each six weeks. The modeling of the writing process by our leadership team, we recently went to Empowering Writers and participated in that. When we came back to campus, we had a writing camp for our students and also for our teachers because we want to make sure our teachers heard the same thing that we did so that we could fully implement those processes and our students can benefit from that. Teachers and students will conference on their writing process. And during this conferencing is when they will come up with action plans to address weaknesses. These weaknesses that the students might have in their writing, the students can look at it, build upon that, and then readdress it next time when they are actually writing their compositions so that that improvement can be seen. We also are using ongoing writer trackers. It's an electronic tracking system that we have in place that our teachers are placing their scores into the system so that we can see how our students are growing each time they write a composition, and we can track their areas of improvement. The campus-wide writing portfolios for collections of compositions is also in place so that our students' compositions can be collected. We can see that improvement. And our students' goals are set on the outside of those compositions so that as they're moving along with their compositions, we can see where they want to improve. Those compositions, once fully collected at the end of the year, will roll up to the next grade level so that they'll have a starting point for our students, and we can continue on with those compositions and improvement in writing. Our goal Three, by May 2018, 65% of all students and all student groups, Grade Five, will meet standard on Star Science. Our subgroup of all scored 39. African-Americans scored 26. Our Hispanic students scored 41, white 50, and economically disadvantaged 36. Our goal for this coming year is 65 in all areas. Our strategies that we're implementing for our fifth-grade science are that our teachers will attend STEM Scopes training and the 5E investigation model, and utilize this 5E model during instruction. Fifth-grade teachers will attend content conversations, which is provided by our curriculum instruction, so that they'll know what is coming up in the upcoming weeks for curriculum. The fifth-grade teachers will also attend Science Questioning Series, which starts this week, and it will continue on throughout the year, and it's provided by curriculum instruction. Fifth-grade science teachers will utilize talk moves to encourage deeper thinking, use of evidence and reasoning to support claims, and to embed academic language. Our teachers will effectively use CER, which is Claims, Evidence, and Reasoning, for our science to make those connections there for our students. They'll also use those STEM Scopes 5E model, the Talk Science, in their science classroom instruction. School leaders will conduct three walkthroughs per six weeks, providing face-to-face feedback based on CNI-created walkthrough forms for alignment and pedagogical expertise in fifth-grade science teachers. The professional development interventions that our teachers and our instructional staff, plus our leadership who are attending, are Balanced Literacy Framework Training and Coaching for K through Two, Comprehension Toolkit Training, Three through Six, our Math Solutions Training with Coaching, K through Six, Empowering Writers Training with Modeling, K through Six, Writers Workshop Training, Holistic Scoring Rubric Training, not only for our teachers, but our students, so our students can see how to move to that next level on their compositions. STEM Scopes Training, Science Questioning Series, Talk Science Training, CNI, along with Campus Leadership Training, will provide ongoing support and monitoring of curriculum components. Modeling and coaching will be provided to support teachers with content delivery. Student intervention provided by teachers will be a result of ongoing data collection and reassessment. Evidence of Effective Implementation. 100% of K through six teachers will embed math solutions and best practices into their guided math block with fidelity. 100% of our K through two teachers will implement the Balanced Literacy Framework by embedding it into their ELAR block. 100% of our three through six teachers will utilize Comprehension Toolkit in their reading instruction. And 100% of our fourth-grade teachers, or excuse me, our fourth-grade writing teachers will embed Empowering Writers into their daily instruction. 100% of K through six teachers will use writing portfolios and student trackers to monitor student progress to see if they've meet their goals. Administrative leadership team and CNI will provide fidelity checks using CNI-created walkthrough forms, Empowering Writers rubrics, Balanced Literacy Framework guides, Math Solutions, Teacher-Student Implementation Framework. Evidence of Effective Implementation will be demonstrated by student attainment of our short-term goals that they've set, our short-term goals that we've set for our students, and long-term goals in math, reading, writing, and science. It will be an ongoing progress, will have ongoing progress checks and reevaluation for our students to assess the objectives that they've accomplished. Do you have any questions for me?
Yes, Mr. Cross, thank you for that. We do have some questions. Mrs. Hudson?
Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. Again, very thorough and very detailed. I, I see that you have focused a lot on professional development with your staff.
Yes, ma'am.
I see that you've focused a lot on professional development and interventions with your staff. Can you just tell me a little bit about how this differs from your prior practices?
In the past, our teachers did have experience with these programs that we've come upon, Empowering Writers. A few years ago, I had sent a few of my teachers to Empowering Writers, and we saw the, the dynamic things that came out of it. Since then, some of my teachers that have been to that training were, their husbands transferred, so I've lost them. With our district having Empowering Writers, it has been amazing to see our teachers and our students jump right in. The, the way that we are looking at professional development is that whole being, that creating that learning atmosphere for all. With the science, the STEM Scopes there, that program, when we trained our teachers on it, we've seen the correlation from the training to the students in the classroom. And that's been the biggest thing that we've looked at. We're still looking at other trainings, not just ones that our district has offered to us, but also through Region 11, the trainings that they have there. In the past, we would go to trainings, and this is what we've noticed. Our teachers might go to trainings, they would come back, implement. When we would go to the trainings, we'd see something slightly different. This year, our instructional team and our leadership team have attended the trainings that the teachers have. So that modeling process and that support is much deeper. We come back, we can actually implement everything that our teachers are implementing, and we can double-check to make sure that our students are getting the full package and getting everything that is needed from them.
So, what I'm hearing, if I understand correctly, is really that you're just making sure that everything is aligned, that everyone's getting the same message and sort of on the same page.
Yes, we're, basically, it's targeted and specific. We're pinpointing areas that we need to improve on, and we're going to continue to look at programs, look at ways to improve our students through our CNI, our IFDs. And curriculum instruction that is out helping us have been there to support us throughout this journey.
And then Evidence of Effective Implementation, your series of, you know, 100% of teachers will be taking the action that results from this professional development. Can you tell me how you're quantifying that?
Yes. When I said 100% of all of our teachers, they are going to implement it. We are implementing those. However, with these programs, they have specific things to look for. They have the look force, they not only have the look force, they actually have the walkthrough forms. Our CNI has developed walkthrough forms for us for science. With our Math Solutions, it has the walkthrough form that has teachers and student reactions. And we went through when we first observed so that we could get our math solutions going. We actually watched what our teachers were doing and the results that our students were performing at. But we're also watching to see what our students were doing with each other, how their conversations were going. So with it, we are looking at not just a spoonful, but the whole scoop so that we can continue on. And we're using the rubrics that are given to us that demonstrate the full process. With our Balanced Literacy Framework, the lesson planning cycle that they have there, when we went to the training, they're like, use this format to follow through. And we were able to see exactly how that full cycle of instruction went. And it came back to the students, and then they pulled from it again to take the students to another level.
Thank you. And then, just one final question. How did you guys arrive as a team at sort of this approach? Was it teacher-focused groups? Was it your administrators? How, how was that process for you guys?
The, the approach for our, our teachers and looking at our data, we were looking at how can we better ourselves and move forward, not only better ourselves, but move our students forward. And then looking at the programs that, that were offered, we were so amazed at what could be accomplished from it. We went, we've watched the model lessons, we watched the students that were interacting in those model lessons. And at our campus, when Math Solutions has come through, we've seen our students progress with the Balanced Literacy. We've seen our students move there. So with those small successes, it builds that fire, and the rest of our teachers are getting into it. When we go to training, when we went to Empowering Writers, our fourth-grade team were so excited over planning for what they were going to do when we got back. While they were planning, we were planning on what the teachers and the students were going to do. So when we got back to campus, like I had mentioned, we did that writing camp as a model piece so that our teachers could see how we were doing it, so they can emulate that and implant it into their classes and make sure that everything's being used with fidelity.
Well, it sounds like a very thoughtful approach and that you definitely have buy-in and some good synergy going on. So I, I look forward to hearing back about your success. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hudson. Mrs. Mays?
Thank you, Dr. Raish. Thank you, Mr. Cross. Couple of questions that I have is, I notice as we are looking at the strategies, I see a lot of teachers attend, teachers attend, teachers attend. I, I see a lot of heavy teacher
Yes.
words. I like the strategy of the students with their binders. And I guess the cross-reference that I'm really trying to make sure, and I'm sure you have, and I just want to guess here you say it, is the accountability for the student themselves, not just all the pressure on the teachers
Teachers.
to attend, teachers to attend. In addition to the emulating and the mocking, I think is awesome. But I also want to make sure that those teachers are able to then take that implementation and specifically design it for what their students need in that classroom. So can you just maybe speak a little on that?
Yes. Our students, the, the accountability piece is not only for our teachers, but for our students. We have PLCs every other week. And meeting those PLCs, we're reviewing our student progress. Our students set goals within that leadership binder for themselves to say, okay, I can hit a 65, I can hit a 70. So anytime we take an assessment, our students know where they're at, where they want to be. And we come back around. At our PLCs, we do look at our objectives, our weaknesses, and our students actually see those weaknesses, and they're conferenced with them. Our teachers reteach those areas of weakness and then reassess those areas to pull our students further. So our students, each time they set goals, they know that they're trying to reach the next goal by reassessing where they're at and, and hitting those objectives. So our students do have full accountability with us. This year, we, or last year, we had set goals with our students, and it was more of us setting the goals rather than the students setting the goals. This year, it's our students and them understanding, if you score at this level, this is where you're at. And we've, we've gone through and discussed it with our students, and our students are setting their goals for themselves and trying to improve on setting their goals for themselves and trying to improve on where they're at in each of the core areas.
Okay.
I hope I answered that.
You did, you did, thank you. And, Mr. Cross, I'll say the same thing to you. Thank you very much for what you're doing and for what your staff is doing there at Short Elementary. Once again, we will support anything you need to make sure that our students are successful there within the building.
Thank you.
One question I have, and this may be more towards our area superintendents and/or Dr. Cavassos. One thing that I've noticed, Goal Two, the African-American population, in this situation for writing, they were five points away from where they want them to be. We've seen the same African-American number disparity much larger than just five points. Are the schools, including the ones we're going to hear from tonight and the ones that we don't need to hear from tonight, are they kind of looking at what's really working at this campus? For instance, for the African-Americans in writing on this campus, obviously, something's working. Have we looked to see maybe sharing some of those strategies at some of the other campuses to maybe close that gap that we've seen here is pretty large? And I'm using the African-American for an example because it's very obvious on some of this data.
I don't know if we have specific strategies for those students, but what we are doing is breaking our data down by our subgroups to look at what is working for each of the subgroups and to make sure that we've got targeted interventions. And so, all of our teachers in fourth grade now are going through the Empowering Writers training, and we will be carefully breaking, you know, each of the, after each of the benchmark assessments, be breaking that data down and to look at the student writing samples to know where the breakdown is occurring for each of the students, and then to be able to coach them up so that they can improve on their individual writing. That's part of the coaching process for the students. We want them to be able to conference with their teachers and then improve in their own writing abilities. So if that, if that answers your question?
Um, I don't know either. Okay. But I, I guess what I'm saying is, is just once I know, overall, as a district, we're looking to close the achievement gap.
Absolutely.
And I'm just saying, specifically looking at these schools, for some of these scores, for some of these star parts, I see huge discrepancies in the African-American population. But in this particular case, it's a five-point difference versus some that we've seen over twenty.
Absolutely.
So something's happening here that, that looks like it's working. So not just for the schools that are here, but just overall as a district, if there's some things that are working for a subpop, which we have at all the schools, are we, are we sharing that information
Right.
within the district?
Yeah, absolutely. That will be something that we'll be closely looking at.
Okay.
Ms. Mays, if I could, in, in essence, yes, we are. There are a number of strategies to that, and I think Dr. Wertz can talk to that a little bit more on the system level. I think Tracy was, I mean, Christie was thinking maybe her area in particular, but in the system level, they do learning walks as part of the work that areas do that calibrates the principals in particular at different campuses. And they do data discussions and breaking out data by subgroups to understand the strategies as principals. And I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Dr. Wertz?
So, one of, good evening, how are you? So one of our goals in our district improvement plan specifically is around writing, and so Dr. Buehl mentioned Empowering Writers as one of our key strategies that we're employing this year to improve writing across schools. With Empowering Writing, with Empowering Writers, there are specific tools that we can use to conduct walkthroughs, and one of the questions that Ms. Hudson asked earlier is how do you quantify whether these things are actually occurring in the classroom? And the way you do that is with this walkthrough documents, you're looking for very specific indicators, and you're looking to see how often you see them. And so, when we walk classrooms, one of the things we want to do this year is try to marry the input, is what I call the input to the output, meaning if these are the specific student outcomes that we're looking to generate, what are the indicators or the inputs that are causing that to happen? So specifically, what are the, the quality teaching practices that are occurring that are generating the positive outcomes for kids, and how can we replicate them? So some of the things that we'll do this year is walk campuses, specifically when writing's occurring, and monitor and measure what practices are occurring in the schools where achievement is high, and see if we can even spread those practices around to other campuses. In some ways that we can do that is during our instructional leadership meetings. For example, in the beginning of November, we have a conference that's, we're doing three conference styles this year where principals and district personnel will have opportunities to select which courses they want to come and take. And one of our key presenters or our key sessions that we're going to have this year specifically around writing, so principals will be able to go and receive training on how do you lead and instruct and guide professional learning and growth in the classroom around writing that produces an outcome for kids. So it's kind of a combination between monitoring our data and getting a sense of which best practices are occurring that are actually producing those data results, and then sharing them with other campuses across the system.
Okay.
And, and I'll just add one thing, and you heard now from two schools, and you'll hear from Wimbush here in a minute, a common theme for addressing from a system level that, that, that we're applying the strategies consistently is the fidelity to the curriculum. And you heard it, I think, from Peach just a little while ago. Are we, are we implementing the curriculum and the resources there in a consistent manner? And that's another way that the system looks at performance across groups and across schools. Sometimes it's a matter of the curriculum being implemented, and, and that's not a critique to anybody or anything like that, other than to say that we continually ensure that there's fidelity to that curriculum because, as you see, if it's implemented one way, it works, and if it's implemented a different way, it may have gaps. And, and so the fidelity, and they've done a lot of work on the curriculum itself to make sure it's appropriate and meets the standard that, that we need, and you may want to mention some.
And if I, if I can add two more things, the Professional Learning Department has professional learning opportunities for teachers that do a couple of things that we've done this year. We have something called Curriculum Connections where teachers are able to come and preview and learn about what's happening in the curriculum before the, the instructional period occurs on the calendar in terms of the scope and sequence. And we've also implemented what I would call like preview videos where a teacher could actually receive information in advance of teaching the unit through a preview video if they're able to make the curriculum connections. The last thing I would say is we have very specific workshops that have been put together for targeted campuses where we provide professional learning, and then we come around and we coach and support teachers in their implementation of those best practices in their classroom. And I think that, that you would find that across, you know, education in general, that often is the biggest gap when it comes to learning. Teachers will go to workshops, they'll learn practices, and then they go back to their classroom. And what we find is that, you know, as, as learners of new practice, you need support in the implementation of that new practice. And so what we've done around very specific targeted areas in actually reading, writing, math, and science, there are specific workshops that are around best practices that we attach coaching back at the campus as a follow-up to the session to help them in their implementation of that process. So it's kind of dual. And the last thing I would say to answer a little bit more about your other question is, the area superintendents facilitate regular PLC opportunities with other principals, which include data meetings where they can, the, the principals can share the data around very specific content areas like writing, as well as what they believe are the antecedents to the outcomes that they have, and what are some of the best practices that those are. So there, it's kind of, there are multiple strategies that are being used to not only ensure that best practice is happening in the classroom, but that the practices that are resulting in good outcomes for kids are also being seeded in other parts of the system.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Cross, thank you for letting me point out a positive for your school to bring that question. And once again, since we're, my question was particularly about subgroups because we're seeing some of these missed things from one or two points, and we know that it's separated into subgroups, that really was the, the purpose. But thank you, Mr. Cross.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. Mr. Chapa?
Mr. Cross, thank you for the, the presentation you've given. My question is similar to the question I had for Dr. Lee, and whereas at Peach, it looks like for the academic goals, there was sort of a, across the board, we're going to set this goal, and it's going to be standard, and we're going to go for it. And here, I've noticed that you, you have differentiated the goals a little bit. So, you know, in Goal One, there's one subgroup that's different. Goal Two, one subgroup is different. But across the board for Goal Three, so my question was, what, what led you to do that, and what process did you go through in, in picking these particular goals?
When we met as a committee, our teachers met with us and our administrative team, and we sat and we analyzed our scores. We were looking at something that our students could reach. We looked at our scores in the past and how we've, our scores have been dropping and changing each year. So we wanted to make sure that our students were going to not only reach a goal, but we wanted something that was attainable. We could have set our goals at seventy and, you know, shot for that goal. I wanted to make sure that at sixty-five, we're going to hit it, but we're still striving for that seventy. It's the minimum that we want. However, we're still shooting much higher than the sixty-five there. And looking at the areas that had the higher goal, they had already reached that goal, and we wanted to ensure that they continued to increase. Through everything that we're doing, we're pushing all of our students, not just our students that might be struggling, but also our GT students, and we want them also to continue to push also, and that's what we do with our curriculum instruction and the implementation of those lessons there.
Okay. Then I, I think the last question I had maybe is for Dr. Cavassos, but we had a couple of campuses that we discussed back in September where we were preparing some appeals, and I believe one of them was Short. Am I correct on that?
Indeed. One of them, one of the appeals is for Short Elementary, and by all accounts, and they have to finalize it from the state, their, their writing should make it, and they should be granted that appeal. We're not in control of that, so that's just a prediction at this point. But part of that is we had the scores, the writing exams rescored, and, and they were scored positively. And so, we should hear back at the end of November, I think, is the earliest for the appeals.
And if that's successful, then Short will not be on IR?
That's correct.
However, we will continue with our plan that we have here because we do want to sure, we do want to shore up everything that we have in place, and we don't want to slip in any other areas. We want to continue to move back up to where we need to be and where we can be.
Those are all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I thank you for the information and for both you and, and Dr. Lee. I know it's, it's somewhat disheartening to be right on the cusp, but not over. And so, thank you for, for your work with that, no matter what the outcome of the appeals is. One of the things that I hear pretty regularly up here is a feeling of, of empathy and passion, and we'll do whatever we can to support you, and whatever it takes, and that type of thing. I've heard that over the years, and I just wanted to make a, an observation. It, it appears that that's indeed happening. It, it seems, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot to say, well, no, it's not really the case, but it just seems that there's tremendous support and resources that are poured in to your campus, to all of the campuses, from the, the administrative team on down on the, the different tools, the different strategies. We, we always hear sometimes that, you know, our, our kids aren't data. Well, that's true, but you can utilize the data to really, and help the teacher, and if the teacher embraces that, can take that information and go, wow. So this, and that's what I'm hearing, is that there's, there's multiple modalities to be able to accomplish the desired outcomes. And so I, I just want to say thank you, Dr. Cavassos, Dr. Wertz, everybody on the admin team, and to this board for supporting that. Because aligning and optimizing achievement is absolutely what we're all about, and it's phenomenal to me to hear all of the different strategies that are being employed everywhere. So we will look forward again to what, what the trend is going further, no matter where you fall with the appeals process, just moving forward. I applaud you on that
Thank you very much.
making the, the campus and the opportunities for the kids as much as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, moving on, one more campus, I think we'll hear from Ms. Pride. Wimbush?
Good evening, President, Dr. Raish, Board Members, and Dr. Cavassos. So we'll start, y'all excuse my voice, I had a little allergy going on. With accountability for Wimbush for 2017, we did improve in all four indices from the year before, but still fell short of the state standard in Index One and Three. We need to meet Two, so we are IR for Index Three, closing the achievement gap. In Index One, we improved by four points from the previous year with a fifty-four, but the target was sixty. In Index Two, we improved by one, the target score was thirty-two, and we scored forty, so we made a target in Index Two. Index Three, we improved by three, but scored a twenty-five and needed a twenty-eight. And then in Index Four, we improved by eight points from the previous year, needing a score of twelve and scored twenty-two. Oh, thank you. Our system safeguards, we met safeguards in all students for math, in Hispanic students for math, and in white students for reading and math, and in economically disadvantaged students in math, but did not meet the, the safeguards in the other areas. All students not in math. Writing or science, African-American, not in reading, math, writing, science. Hispanic, not in reading and writing. Economically disadvantaged, not in reading, writing, or science. And then Special Ed, not in reading and math. Our mobility rate is thirty-five point one. That did increase by about four percent this year, and then our attendance is at ninety-three point four. So our turnaround implementation plan is focusing on two areas that we see is the greatest need. We're not abandoning math, but we did meet standard for all in math last year, and we have some things going. So we're not abandoning math, but we're looking at our two main areas of focus on our implementation plan, which is our Star Reading. For the reading, all students met fifty, and our goal is for sixty. Sixty was state standard. African-Americans scored thirty-eight, Hispanic fifty-six, white sixty-six, economically disadvantaged forty-eight. And since white did meet, at sixty-six percent, we wanted their goal to be higher. And the strategies that we're using, we do a lot of work in planning in our PLC meetings to align our plans with the standards. We look at targeted interventions and extension lessons, and that's something that we also use, looking at the pacing guide, Balanced Literacy Framework, and I know you've heard that from the other campuses as well, just making sure that all those components are in the Balanced Literacy block with fidelity, comprehension toolkit, strategies, K through six, implementation of small group reading, and that is also at all grade levels. And then teachers are monitoring the progress of their students and monitoring their, their I-station data, along with the priority reports that they provide, on-demand corrective instruction for the students that need it. And then always looking, and you're going to see PLC or professional learning communities and threaded throughout this and the work that we are doing for our students. The students are also tracking their data, and what we noticed last year, we started this second semester, and really noticed when the students were tracking their own data and, and meeting with the teachers and conferencing, they got really excited when they saw their growth. And so we started this year, every student, all the way through every grade level, are gonna, they're going to have their own data tracking and conferencing with, with the teachers. So we're very excited about that this year. Our second goal is, our focus is on writing, and we want sixty percent of all our fourth grade students to meet or exceed approaches grade level in writing. Last year, our all for fourth grade writing was twenty-nine, African-American twenty, Hispanic thirty-one, economically disadvantaged thirty-one. So we're setting the goal of sixty. Strategies, we have a campus-wide writing action plan. It's very important not to just focus on what we're doing with the fourth grade, but systemically in the lower grades, and, and writing focus at each grade level. Academic teams and teachers calibrating on the holistic scoring as well, on the Star Writing rubric. Writing rubric. We have also been attending the Empowering Writers Workshop that includes, there's been two parts already, one at the beginning of the year and one just this last week, that also included modeling in the classrooms. We were fortunate to host it at Wimbush, so they went into our classrooms and modeled the lessons as well. And then our instructional coach is planning with our fourth grade teachers to make sure those strategies are implemented and helping follow up with the coaching and in-class implementation as well. Our teachers and our instructional team are working in PLCs together to develop lesson plans that are aligned to the state standards, utilizing Curriculum Central, utilizing the pacing guides and the resources, and they're really looking at that student work and the writing compositions, or bringing that to the PLC and analyzing that information, and then basing our interventions as well as core instruction on that data. And talking about the interventions, targeted interventions and extension times are created based on the pacing calendar and the student work and artifacts, and then following that up with walkthroughs, looking at the lesson plans, planning with the teachers. And then again, the students are tracking their writing and their progress in their writing compositions, and then writing portfolios for grade levels K through four. Professional development, or professional learning communities are analyzing our assessment data, analyzing student work, compositions, having those deep dives and conversations about what is it the students don't understand, how was it taught, what are their misconceptions? And then lesson planning together, an intervention enrichment group we call Win Time, it's what I need. So do they need an intervention, is there a gap they need to fill, or are they on grade level, do they need to be pushed and extended? And then as in elementary school, and I'm sure y'all are aware, it's really difficult for the vertical piece a lot of times because our teachers are off more at team times. So we've designated one Wednesday a month for that vertical planning and data dives and collaboration as well, because we saw that was the piece that was really missing, and we just didn't have enough time for. So we felt like, you know, instead of a couple of times a semester, really having it at a monthly designated time for that. And then looking at the rigor matrix, that's one of the things we've talked about in our PLC meetings, is having that rigor matrix available and really looking at as we're planning the lessons. We focused a lot on intervention times before and really filling the gaps, because our kids do come with gaps, but really, you know, what do we need to do to bump up that core so those standards are what they need to be for the expectation they're going to have to demonstrate on the STAR test? So the professional development interventions, Empowering Writers, as we talked about, and I think one of you guys had asked one of the other principals about the difference, the job embedded is really, I think, makes a huge difference. And I don't know if you've ever been to a training, but you know, you think that sounds good, I really want to do this, and then when you go get ready to do it, you're like, how was I supposed to start that? Or no, that didn't quite go. And really having that transparency about where I'm struggling and how it can help you, and just that Think Partner to help you through that process, and then if you do need something modeling, being able to step back and someone step in to do that. And the kids are very receptive and gracious, and so that has made a huge difference in being able to implement the strategies, is that job embedded coaching and the follow-up for the fidelity as well. And our Win Time is corrective instruction, but it's also some pre-teaching. The intervention team and our instructional team looks at the pacing calendar, and what are some of those basic skills that those kids need to be able to perform well in the core? So in their, there's multiple groups in the intervention, and they work on strategies to build that foundation for them, as well as they look at the data, what are some things that we need to spiral that they struggled in? They look at the last two weeks, the instruction that was going on, and we do an assessment at that time, where did they struggle? And let's scaffold those supports as well. So Win is kind of a pre-teach, reteach, and corrective. At the end of the week, there's a quick tabletop assessment on the strategies that intervention has been focusing on, and if they struggle then, then there's a corrective instruction on Friday after that. So, you know, it sounds like a lot, but there is some pre-teaching, reteaching, and corrective instruction that goes along with that Win, which is the what I need intervention enrichment Professional development, also the guided reading we've had, we have a consultant that's coming in to train in guided reading that also has already been on campus, and our teachers three through six have gone through it. K through two will also go through it, where there's also modeling with our students, and then we'll be coming back for some coaching. And then our instructional coach is following up with them and helping them with the implementation piece, the coaching and the modeling, and just in fidelity, as well as the administrative team following up with walkthroughs. We also have an Intervention Read One Eighty, System Forty-Four for students that are below grade level in reading at two years or more. Balanced Literacy Framework, Coaching and Implementation, K through two, Comprehension Toolkit Training and Implementation. We also, and I put this in here, Capturing Kids' Hearts and Region Eleven is also coming out and coaching us on PBIS, and that really is climate and culture and classroom management and just the culture of the classroom, but it impacts the learning. And so we started Capturing Kids' Hearts last year, we're continuing with that, we're doing a reboot with the flipping group that does the Capturing Kids' Hearts training this week, as well as sending our new teachers to the full two-day training next week. And that really is about relationship and just building community on the campus and within the classroom. And then we are partnering with Region Eleven just for PBIS structures and engagement. Our own PBIS, our Student Services Department also has been working with us, because we want to make sure that that PBIS is at tier one as solid and consistent across the board as possible. And so that's been a big focus, and a request of the campus and the teachers as well, feedback from them. And so that's going well, but we want to make sure we're doing everything for that. And Region Eleven also has the student engagement piece they're going to be looking at that folds that in as well. So we're excited, that is new this year, and we're excited about that. Also, we started tutoring the Tuesday after Labor Day this year. We just took our data from last year, formed those groups and those tutorings. We have reading before school and math after school, so if they want to come to both, they can come to both for a really long day. And so we really wanted to get on top of that this year, as well as, you know, the focus that we've already had in our intervention time. And evidence of that is the implementation in the classroom, the documentation in the lesson plans, we are planning with the teachers, the instructional team is, giving them support where they're needed, the walkthroughs for the fidelity checks, the student artifacts that we're looking at and analyzing in the PLCs. Evidence of effective implementation is on the data trackers that we're seeing student growth in those areas, and then the curriculum, campus assessments, and then ultimately STAR, the STAR results. Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Pride. Mrs. Mays.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Thank you, Ms. Pride. Really appreciate this. Think Partner, I love that idea. It also makes, it also seems to reiterate the fact of we're all in this together. I think earlier, it may have been Dr. Lee of saying if a teacher in the classroom needs help, that they feel safe to stop and say, okay, I need help. I want to be able to implement this, and I need help. I see that happening. I was able to walk through your halls and see all the different colors, all the encouragement for the students. So once again, I just want to thank you and your staff for everything that you're doing. Congratulations on the increase that you've made from one year to the next year. That's very important, and obviously you're building on that momentum of going forward, and I think you're doing an awesome job, and your teachers are doing a great job. Something else you said that I think's really good, looking at assessments, I think you said that you do the implementation, implementation, two weeks later, you're going back and you're assessing in case you need to make any changes. I think that's awesome, because we get set in routines, or once again, if someone is struggling, they'll know soon enough to be able to make that change and that shift for the students in the classroom. So I think that's great, too. But just once again, I just want to let you know that we are supporting anything you need. I say the same thing that I've said to the other principals, but thank you, Mrs. Pride, and thank you for your staff, and your students are awesome, and thank you for what you're doing to continue to make sure that they're successful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. Mrs. Hudson.
Thank you, President Rice. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Pride. I have a quick question, and that is, I love the idea of the extended day tutoring before and after school. You may not have this data, so I hate to put you on the spot, but is yours a large walking population? Do a lot of the kids get to school with their family, or is that a lot of?
We have no buses.
Okay.
So everyone is in walking distance, or their parents bring them, but we have a large population that walks.
So that tutoring then would be accessible to anyone who wanted to take advantage of it? Okay, good. That's really reassuring. I want to thank you for letting me spend so much time in your school last year. I just absolutely.
It's great having you.
Love being there. Your little warriors are super sweet, I got so many hugs, and I really got to get to know you guys and the heart of your school. I'll echo Ms. Mays, congratulations on making so much progress. I got to see how much work was being done in the classroom, how many resources you guys brought in for those students, and how much fun the students were having using them. It's not a drudgery at all, it's just a really fun and enjoyable place to be, and I think that shows in the increase that your students have made. So congratulations on that. I love your fight. I love that even with all of those increases, you've still gone back and said, how can we do more, and put together a thorough, thoughtful plan on how to take it that extra mile. So I appreciate you so much, and I hope that I can come back again this year for a little while.
We love for you. Come on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hudson. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Hi, Ms. Pride, good to see you again.
Thank you.
Your is an interesting question, and just being in your school, I know you guys have increased y'all's attendance this year from last year, correct?
Yes.
So far?
So far.
Where are y'all at this year?
No, that was...
I see it all over y'all's halls, I know y'all are tracking it.
Yeah, I know it's on there, I'm like, I don't know.
Yeah, I see it all, I know y'all are tracking, it's okay, I see it all over there. Has Ms. Hudson brought that up? I have to admit, I didn't know Wimbush was a hundred percent walking. What does that attendance rate do on days when there's bad weather?
Well, usually they'll come, but they just may be late. They come, they come. I mean, I think more of our...
Do we track it? Have we tracked weather days?
Weather days? I don't know that we've tracked weather days, but they come wet, I know they come in wet, I greet them at the door every day.
So now they're showing up wet?
Mm-hmm.
Showing up late, hungry, because they may have missed breakfast because they were late.
We have grab and go. We always feed them.
And I think everyone would automatically say attendance rate directly relates to...
It may be, I don't know.
Attendance directly relates to student achievement, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I think as a district, we've got to look at other interventions on rain days when you have a hundred percent walk, and I know where majority of y'all's students walk from. It's sometimes not the farthest walk, I think we have other farther walks in our district that come in there, but knowing there's a hundred percent walk and knowing we have students concentrated in certain areas around Wimbush, I think if we're not addressing ways to get them, especially on weather days, to there, I think we're missing. And I think we need to engage our transportation department and find a way to engage that, to get that. Because if you look, you do have the lowest attendance rate in the past over others. You and Peach have some of the highest, I think the two highest I've ever seen on mobility rate, and I think you can track these, and mobility rate directly correlates usually across the board with that. So I think we've got to get more creative on how we're addressing those, and I think I would ask the district and Dr. Cavassos, Ms. Pride, Dr. Buell, to think about some of that on those attendance rates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg, and I will just close with, Ms. Pride, you've been there four years now, and it shows. You've done a remarkable job there.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your spirit. It's absolutely no easy task. I'm thankful for you being there at the helm, and we will look forward to you and your staff pushing over the edge.
Thank you.
And thank you very much. So I don't see any further lights indicating questions, and I don't see that we have any comments from the audience. So, you can relax. So I will officially say, unless, are there any trustees that have any other, any other questions? Okay. So then the public hearing on the turnaround implementation plan for fourth-year improvement required campus, Wimbush Elementary, and selected elements for first-year improvement required campuses, Peach and Short Elementary, is now closed. And we will move on. Sure? We can certainly do that. So the next item on our agenda is open forum for agenda items. I don't see any cards, so we will move on. And the next section, action items, we have two different action items, and seeing this is all fresh on our minds, let's flip these items, let's take action item B first to consider the turnaround implementation plan for fourth-year improvement required campus, Wimbush, and the targeted elements for first-year improvement required campuses, Peach and Short Elementary. Do I have any discussion or motion I will entertain?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mrs. Hudson, a second by Ms. Walton, to approve the turnaround implementation plan as I previously stated. Any further discussion? If none, then please vote. We have approved the implementation plans. All right. Moving on, next item, letter A, Consider the 2017-18 Campus Performance Objectives and District Scorecard. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Rice, and Dr. Wertz will give us an update on all our campus improvement plans. Okay, it's a summary of the campus improvement plans, performance objectives, and our district scorecard. So, Dr. Wertz.
Good evening, Dr. Rice, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. I'm here this evening to share with you some samples around the campus improvement plan, performance objectives, and discuss in more detail the district scorecard. I believe each member has been provided an opportunity to review the campus improvement plans. I just wanted to articulate that tonight, we're here to talk specifically about the performance objectives. The strategies, which are the actual work that is designed to affect the outcomes in alignment with the performance objectives, are in their final stages of development. So today in the presentation, I'll go a little bit over what the process is in terms of how that happens, and when that will actually finalize and occur. So the first thing I wanted to say is that our goal is to try to align all of these systems. It's really counterproductive to have a district improvement plan and separate campus improvement plans, and a strategic plan, and scorecards, and they're not all actually doing the same thing. One of the things we try to do in terms of even our accountability system is to make sure that when we're measuring one indicator, that indicator falls in multiple plans, so that we're reporting out on the same work. And so this slide really is just to try to articulate the intentionality around our work of alignment. All of our plans, whether it's the district improvement plan, the scorecard, or the campus improvement plans, are all aligned back to the strategic plan, that's where we start. The district improvement plan performance objectives were adopted by the board at the last board meeting, I believe. And what we did for the scorecard, which is a little different than a district improvement plan, just for the refresh for the audience, all intents and purposes, is the scorecard really is designed to take some of the high leverage points of the district improvement plan and place them on a scorecard that we can monitor in a very more, in a much more simplistic kind of overview way, rather than getting down into the weeds of every performance objective. So you're going to notice on the district scorecard tonight that some of the targets on the scorecard are also the district improvement plan, but you'll also at the same time notice that not every performance objective that's in the district improvement plan is highlighted in the scorecard. Finally, after the district campuses each create a campus improvement plan, which is aligned to the goals that the district has at the score, at the district improvement plan, you'll notice that we have On Track kind of threading through all of these. And the goal around the On Track is... And the goal around the on-track is to get from the plan, which is more systemic and more, uh, systems kind of view, down to the progress of an individual student. And so our, our efforts around on-track is to make sure that the plans we put in district improvement plan and the strategies that are articulated in the campus improvement plan are in fact resulting in individual students' growth and progress, that they can meet their own individual targets. So all four of those kind of components kind of work interchangeably with each other. We have four, uh, goals in our strategic plan and our district improvement plan, and they are focused around academic achievement, college readiness, workforce readiness, and then leadership, citizenship, and responsibility. So you'll notice tonight, and as you read in the campus improvement plans, that all performance objectives are aligned to one of these four main goals. This slide is to help articulate a little bit about the process that goes, uh, that campuses go through when they design a campus improvement plan. Uh, it's initiated by the Department of Research and Accountability, and what we do is we provide training, uh, to campuses about what the continuous improvement process looks like, uh, how to conduct a root cause analysis, and how do you land on strategies that are aligned to what you have identified as root cause. Once that training occurs, there is support and feedback provided by the area superintendents individually to schools as they begin that process. And, uh, one of the things that we've done this year is the area superintendents collaborated with the curriculum and instruction department to provide a training and some support and guidance around how to conduct a, a, a deeper dive into root cause analysis. And so how that occurred is there was a data protocol that was provided to campus principals. They worked through that protocol with their teams and brought their data analysis to the meeting. Then they engaged with curriculum instruction where they dove deep using a tool that was provided into each of the content areas. So for example, if I was a school that struggled in reading, uh, they had a document that we provided that allowed them to break reading instruction apart in much more finite terms and identify from their own observations whether they noticed those components sometimes, always, or never at their school. And the purpose of doing that was for us to get a sense for what was happening in terms of instruction that was producing outcomes. And what we tried to do then is align the data analysis to what their perceptions were about the quality of instruction that was happening in their building, and to try and triangulate those things to identify what they believe was the root cause for their instructional challenges that they were having. And the reason we did that is to also align that process back to the district improvement plan, so that when we develop strategies for the district improvement plan, that we are developing strategies that are directly correlated or aligned to what the campuses are, are saying, is there, there are actual challenges in the classroom in terms of instruction. So once they completed the comprehensive needs assessment, uh, the campuses went back to their schools and worked with their site-based decision-making teams and their campus leadership teams to, uh, develop, uh, and really refine, uh, their own performance objectives that were attached or at least aligned to the district improvement plan. And those were provided to you through the Plan for Learning, um, the 808 Technologies, uh, platform, and, um, they're being presented here tonight for your approval. Once, uh, they, we receive approval from you for the, the, uh, performance objectives for each of the individual campuses, then the principals will then finalize the strategies to actualize the outcomes they're looking for over the next couple of weeks. And our goal is to have all CIPs, uh, in their final form by the end of the month. I wanted to, tonight, just share with you what a sample would look like in terms of each of the individual schools, and I've invited a couple of principals here tonight, um, to be here. I want to first thank each of the campus principals and the teams on their work. To develop a true improvement plan, that's more than a compliance document. It does take some effort. Oftentimes, you'll find that these kinds of documents are created in terms of just because they're legally required. But what we've really worked on, and I would say we've been pretty diligent about working on this the last four or five years, is to really leverage these documents as a tool for improvement, so that when we do our quarterly reviews, um, they're actually a tool that can help us gauge whether we're making growth or not, rather than just going through motions. And so, um, I, I just want to extend my thanks to the campus principals and the area superintendents who have worked pretty diligently on working, uh, to develop these plans. So the first example I wanted to provide to you tonight is from Atherton Elementary. And the, the sample that I am showing you is specifically around, um, goal number one, which is around academic achievement, and the performance objective, um, at the district level was to move from sixty-four to sixty-seven. And here you'll notice that the campus, um, concentrated their efforts around three specific subgroups, which are also highlighted in the campus, the district improvement, um, plan. Um, we have three specific areas that we know need significant growth in this, uh, in reading in the district, specifically economically disadvantaged special education students and students who are African, African-American. And so, and you'll notice on this, this sample at Atherton Elementary, they have identified what their individual targets are at their school, which contribute to our district outcome. And then they've identified also, you'll notice here, the, the specific strategies that they choose to employ to reach those outcomes. Uh, the other area that I want to draw your attention to is over here at the end where it says, "Expect a result or impact." And what we're looking for is a quantifiable target to allow us to gauge whether we're making growth or progress in that area. So in this specific example, um, teachers at Atherton Elementary will be implementing multi-level instruction, which is another word or term they use to, about, around differentiation to try to meet the individual students' needs in the classroom in the small group instruction and through the use of their student support intervention is. And their goal is that eighty percent of their walkthroughs that they do in the classroom during small group instruction will show that there is in fact differentiation, um, happening to meet the needs of those individualized students. And so as the principal and the team walk the classrooms, they will be looking for those indicators and then identifying whether that's happening at least eighty percent of the time, and marking during the formative reviews, November, January, March, and June, whether those, uh, whether progress was being made. And I think the thing that's important to note about campus improvement plans specifically around strategies is when it comes to measuring, we're looking for two things. One, how are we measuring whether the strategy in fact is being implemented? And two, what impact that, that strategy is having on the outcome students are experiencing? And the reason why those two components are important is because, one, if you don't implement the strategy, you can't measure it, of course. But the other one specifically around what its impact is on student learning in, on a quarterly basis, is if you're not making any gains, it causes you an opportunity to stop and reflect to see, one, is there a problem with the strategy? Are we picking the wrong one? Or, um, do we need to discontinue it altogether, or are we on track and we need to keep pressing forward? And I think that kind of gets down to the question, Ms. Mays, that you were asking a little bit earlier about how do you address specific sub pops? This was one example of a way, uh, of the way Atherton can do that around the sub pops they've identified in their CIP, is to measure whether those students are in fact being differentiated for during their small group instruction, and is that differentiation resulting in those subgroups actually performing better and better each quarter? And if the answer is no, then the team can go back and reflect on, well, what's the practice that's missing? And are there other schools that are having more success, and can we reach out to find out what they're doing? So this is important, I think, when it comes to CIP, and I, I point that out because, um, you really have to measure both of those two items when you're, when you're actually looking at strategy. The second sample I wanted to share with you actually comes from Bowles Junior High, and we have the principal here tonight as well. Uh, and this is around goal number two, which is around college readiness. Um, our district goal is specifically around index four and moving from fifty-nine to sixty-one. And so there are several strategies here that you're going to notice. One is around, um, the rigor and relevance framework. Our district, we've been working, uh, with schools to really try to, um, encourage and help staff design lessons that we, what we call fall-in quadrant C and D of the rigor and relevance framework. And basically quadrant C is highly rigorous, um, lessons, and quadrant D is one that's not only highly rigorous, but also one that's, um, highly relevant and allows kids to apply their understanding in unpredictable situations. Uh, so here you can see one of their strategies is around, um, is around helping to develop those lessons through the PLC process. They've also, will be leveraging advisory time, um, as an RTI tool to address students who are, are within five percent of scoring of advanced on STAR. And I think the, one thing that I think's a good example around that, that's, uh, about a strategic strategy for targeting a specific group of students who are, that are really close and advanced. And the reason why advance is important is because that is one of the areas in index four that's measured, um, to account for college readiness. And then finally, um, every core teacher will create at least two project-based, um, lessons, which allow for students to engage in a rigorous learning experience and one that's highly relevant, but in a way, in a platform or a type of learning that's different than what we would say is traditional learning. Um, you'll also notice over here that the targets are, are quantifiable, so specifically they're looking to increase their goals, um, in a quantifiable way, so they can see whether they're getting closer or not. And one way that this school is able to measure whether these, this impact is actually happening is during our CAs, our curriculum assessments and our benchmark scores. We, um, calibrate those as if this, the, um, the accountability system was, was happening at the moment, like the way the state would, would analyze it, and we project for those schools what their indices are. And so, um, the principal of Bowles will have an opportunity to, uh, you know, look at his index four when CA one, CA two, and benchmarks are coming out to see whether these, uh, strategies are in fact impacting the index. The next example I want to share is from Lamar High School. This is, this is around the category of workforce readiness, and the goal or the performance objective is that, um, all eligible Lamar High School students passing the workforce-related certification exams will increase by one percent. So they're wanting to go from eighty-five to eighty-six. And this specific, um, strategy that they're putting in place is that, um, certificate course teachers, so teachers that are engaged in teaching workforce readiness courses where there's a certificate attached to it, will, um, provide opportunities for students to engage in practice questions and, um, and assessments that prepare them to actually take those exams. And their goal is for, uh, those students, eighty-six percent of those students, to pass, uh, those assessments. I will say, um, our goal around workforce readiness, you probably have wondered, and we mentioned this during our DIP, why we would place a goal that's so high on a district improvement plan, um, when that's actually quite successful, almost ninety percent. But we decided that it was important to keep it in our front, um, lane, so to speak, our purview, because it's such a strong emphasis in Arlington in terms of making sure that our students have access to quality CTE programming, but that there are, there, it's actually resulting in an opportunity to, to join the workforce in some way. The last example I want to share is from Segin High School, and this is around, um, establishing a new baseline score around the Student Quality of Instruction Survey. Um, I want to highlight this as a, as a process goal. Uh, I'll mention that again probably when I'm mentioning, when we're talking about the scorecard. We have some goals in our DIP this year, which is about a baseline, and that's because we're redesigning the, um, the, the surveys. But we still have it as a performance objective because we want to improve in the students' perception of the quality of instruction they're experiencing in the classroom. So this is an example, um, from Segin, where the teachers will participate in PLCs that, that work towards increasing the quality of instruction, specifically around collaborative planning, leveraging data to make appropriate decisions for students, employing the, the use of SMART goals, um, in the classroom, and then also helping teachers to identify and implement engagement techniques to help kids, um, you know, enjoy the learning process and to, uh, engage in what we call productive struggle, so that they are willing to commit to the task, even though it might be challenging for them. Also, um, they will be working with, uh, the campus-led professional development to work on, um, leveraging the curriculum that's found in Curriculum Central, making sure that there is an alignment between the standards that are being taught and the instructions being provided in the classroom, and that they're adhering to the learning progression. So our curriculum documents, um, just as a point of information, actually articulate how and what order to teach the standards, so that you can take students from wherever they happen to be in the mastery level of that standard, all the way to the point of where their endpoint should be. And then finally, um, implementing formative assessments, and the, the, the role around formative assessments, of course, is to measure the learning as it's happening, not, not, um, at the endpoint. And so one of the things that we, we will be doing obviously is, um, leveraging on top of that instruction, uh, of those, those formative assessments, the, they will be working with the data found in the Gibson survey, and then also, um, implementing that survey and gathering results to see if it's in fact, these things are impacting the way kids perceive the instruction in the classroom. So there, the goal, um, that, that you're noticing on here will probably, the measures will probably be adjusted, um, because the only measures that we have listed under this strategy are increasing, for example, from two-point-nine-four to two-point-nine-eight, and that's old data from an old survey. But one of our strategies that we're trying to employ when we leverage the new, um, the new survey is to try to find a way to link them in some way, so we can see that we can measure progress without losing all the data that we've gathered the last several years we've been doing the survey. This is the scorecard that I know you're familiar with from the two thousand sixteen-seventeen. Um, there are four categories, um, and, um, the academic achievement, the college readiness, leadership, citizenship, and responsibility, workforce readiness. And you'll notice that these, uh, outcomes or that we were, that were desirable for last school year are also embedded in the district improvement plan, so this was just a reminder. The draft scorecard that I want to present to you this evening, um, we have highlighted a few high leverage points from the district improvement plan that we are recommending to be placed on a scorecard for, um, for consideration. One thing I want to note, and it was alluded to by one of the area superintendents in the previous presentation, is that our accountability system is actually, um, being changed. Um, we don't know exactly, um, the, the, where it's going to land. The state has not provided us with the endpoint targets, and so we're kind of in a, I would say, a limbo situation where we're monitoring progress under an old system, knowing that in the early part of spring, they're going to, you know, drop one of the indices and complete set restandards. So, um, we may have to make some adjustments to targets once we know what that accountability system looks like and how they're measuring it, but we just don't have all the details yet. But I just thought it was important to kind of mention that. So for, under academic achievement, one of the things that, uh, we've listed, of course, is that all of our campuses will meet standard on state accountability. So, um, when we, our goal is that regardless of what the accountability system turns out to look like in terms of, uh, targets or thresholds, um, our goal is to meet those, um, that, those targets. And as a point of interest, um, when we conduct our curriculum assessment doc, uh, reviews or our benchmark scores, we are running our data under the old system, and we're projecting under the new system as closely as we know with all the information that we have, to try to monitor both, keep kind of both feet in both pools at the same time, so that we're not, we're not caught off guard. And our goal is to kind of watch our campuses. One thing that we can do in our data is we can get a sense of, um, how schools are performing in terms of their indices, and we can also get a sense, uh, as to whether there's any projection that there could be a problem down the road. And so what we do is we leverage that information to then build supports around them upfront, so we can be proactive around it rather than reactive at the endpoint. The other, the other dataset around academic achievement that we're recommending highlighting is around our students' passing of ISIP. Will increase from seventy-one to seventy-two. ISIP is, um, the way we measure students' reading progress on grade level in the primary grades. Um, most of the accountability system does not, well, none of the accountability system really focuses on primary grades, and we felt like it was important to have a measure that we have our eyes on around our students' growth in, um, the primary grades, and reading is, is, um, obviously, um, the foundation of all of their learning. So that's why we recommended that. Under college readiness, we have the percentage of graduates completing an equivalent of six semester credit hours for dual-credit AP or IB to go from forty-seven to forty-nine. And then we also have listed the percentage of limited English proficiency students graduating, increasing from seventy-five to seventy-seven. We specifically outlined limited English proficiency in terms of graduation, um, because it is a, it is a significant sub pop in, uh, sub pop here in Arlington, and we want to make sure that, um, they are able to, they are graduating and meeting the same, um, kind of thresholds that we would expect for students in the general population. So, um, we've noted them under college readiness. Leadership, citizenship, and citizenship and responsibility is made up primarily of process goals. So you're going to notice most of these are connected to our surveys, which are being redesigned by Gibson. And then we have, um, one that's listed around the implementation of the, the different phases of the bond program, and then of course proposing, um, an annual budget that's directly correlated to our needs here for operations and for, um, our instructional programming. So I'll highlight, uh, a few of those, uh, those baselines at the, at the top. We have a new baseline that we're proposing around the employee engagement survey. Um, we have a new baseline that we're proposing around the district services survey. Um, we also have a baseline that we're, we're establishing for the student survey as well as the parent, uh, engagement survey. Once we have baselines and we have new data this year, next year we'll propose, um, actual targets that are quantifiable. The last column on the scorecard is around workforce readiness. Here, this is act, the first one is around students taking a coherent sequence of courses. Uh, students can take CTE classes any way they want. What the state measures against, uh, us is to see how many students are taking courses that have some sort of sequence, so that it leads to somewhere. Our goal is to go from thirty-four to thirty-five percent of our students, and so we're putting strategies in place to help students start, um, thinking about how they're selecting their courses, and is there a possibility that they could take courses that will lead to an endpoint somewhere that will benefit them down the road? Um, the other one is specifically, um, connected to the original goal that I mentioned earlier around workforce certification exams. Um, we have put that also on the scorecard, so that we can continue to work closer to the ninety percent of our kids passing those exams, so they're not only taking the classes, but then they're able to, um, have the certification needed to get a viable job once they leave us. So that, those are the campus improvement plan, performance objectives, and the scorecard, and I'm welcome to take any questions. and I'm welcome to take any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Wertz. I appreciate the information. We do have at least one question at this point. Mr. Hibbs?
Dr. Wertz, administration, I'm going to compliment you. Many people knew when I first came on, the first two years, I read all seventy-two campus improvement plans, and to say that they were complacent was an understatement. They were, many of them were outdated, many of them were just done to basically just fill a sheet. I will say, Mr. Providence Sears was always good. And so, and so I'll give you that, that kudos on that. But this is one of our big successes with the strategic plan because once the, the board and the administration moved together with the strategic plan, we understood that there needed to be these processes put in place, ones that actually had teeth to the campus improvement plans, ones that could be measured against the strategic plan, against the individual needs of, of those individual campuses. And today, we're using them as measurements. What I, what I really liked seeing is how we, we base how we are on track to graduation, how we're, we are in, you know, bridging or narrowing the achievement gap. The process, the thought that is going into these, from the superintendent to the areas SOPs, from being directed by the director of, of curriculum, I forgot your full title.
She's academic officer.
Whatever you are, the catch-all man, right? You guys have done a tremendous job, and, and I, I, I think this is one of the things I'm most proud because I can tell there's a consistent message, messaging moving forward that we're going to make our campus, and they can put that campus name in. We're going to be accountable for it, and we're going to seek these students' successes. With that, and I like the direction that we're going with our district scorecard. This is an action item. I'm going to move that to approve the campus performance objectives and the district scorecard.
Okay, there's a motion?
I'll second, but I also want to chit chat.
There's a motion by Mr. Hibbs, a second by Ms. Hudson. There are other lights, so we will have discussion. Anything else?
No.
Okay. The catch-all man. So chief academic officer, CAO, so you can be the catch-all operative.
Okay.
There you go. All right. Okay, thank you, Ms., Mrs. Mays, please.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Just one quick question on the campus planning process for the site-based decision-making team. Can you just elaborate on exactly who makes up the site-based decision-making team?
Sure.
How often they meet, and is there a way to see or to tell what their input was in the overall campus instruction?
Sure. In fact, I wouldn't mind having one of the principals share with you their process specifically. I'm trying to remember off the top of my head what the board policy says, but usually a site-based decision-making committee will consist of, of course, the campus principal. There will be, there is, the percentage of it has to consist of parents. Usually there's a community rep and a business rep, and then there's teachers that are on the committee. One other thing that's important to note is at the high school level, oftentimes they'll also include students on that site-based decision-making committee. The district improvement committee meets four times a year. I believe the campus improvement committees, are they four?
Four to six weeks.
Four to six weeks. But why don't I let one of the principals share with you, if you don't mind, what their process has been in terms of how they leverage their, their SPDMs and the development of their plans?
I think they're going through rock, paper, scissors.
Good evening. Dr. Raj, Dr. Cabazos, members of the board. And I'm Ms. Arvar, principal at Atherton, and just let me tell you a little bit about our site base. And I did want to add that we actually had even additional teacher input at our campus. And so we have vertical teams that also meet, and so we brought actually our plan. So we have a math vertical team, a science vertical team, a writing vertical team, a discipline actually, vertical team. And so science, reading, math, and then what they do is that they meet, and they actually talked about some of these strategies also. So we got some additional input from the vertical teams. Then we took our plan, the draft, to the site-based team, and then as a site-based committee, which we do have representation of every grade level, we do have parents represented too, we do have a district representative. And then we brought it to discussion to see if there were any changes that we wanted to make, and then we went ahead and proposed our draft for the district. So that's the process that we went through.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Mays. Mrs. Hudson?
Thank you, President Raj, and thank you, Dr. Wertz. So my question, I'm going to see if I can actually find a way to succinctly describe what my question is. So I'm looking at the examples of Atherton, Bowles, and Lamar, and the strategy description as compared to the strategy's expected result or impact. And there's one that stands out to me. It's on Atherton's, and it is, the very first one, their strategy's expected result is that eighty percent of walkthroughs during small group instruction will show implementation of multi-level instruction. So I assume that that's because you believe that this multi-level instruction will result in improved student achievement, but your goal is not improving a test score. Your goal is improving the process, right? Or, or what you're verifying is the process, and then you're kind of assuming that the result will follow. Am I understanding that correctly? That's pretty unique because the remainder of the strategies and measures that have been given to us, there's a strategy, for instance, under Lamar, all certificate course teachers will administer practice questions and practice tests with a similar testing environment to the actual test to help prepare students for the actual test. But there's no specific goal in there about how many tests the teacher will give, how many opportunities the students will have to practice, what kind of feedback the students will get on the test that they're given, and then the expected result is at least eighty percent, eighty-six percent of eligible students will pass their workforce-related exam. I'm extremely appreciative of a goal that, where you're actually measuring the process that you're going through because I think then you have a way of saying, well, eighty percent didn't have the result that we wanted, so maybe we want to up that to ninety percent. Whereas if you're not measuring your process over here with the certificate course teachers, then maybe you don't know if one more practice test, maybe one teacher had ninety percent and one teacher had seventy percent. Was it because they did more practice tests? You know, what was the difference? So I guess the question that I'm getting to is, how are we, what's the additional data that we're collecting on these strategies? Because I understand, I mean, setting the goal of eighty-six percent passing the certification test is extremely important. I totally get that. But is there something else that's being done at the campus level to measure the process that then achieves that goal?
Right. So what you're describing actually, essentially you're, you're noticing that, what you're actually describing is where our, our work actually is right now. One of the things that we've noticed that most districts struggle with, and this is where we're actually trying to shore ourselves up in Arlington, is ensuring that the measure side measures those two points I was talking about. And I think Atherton is a good example of it, which you kind of honed in on. The strategy that's listed should tell the public and the teachers and all of us, what are we doing to actually reach the outcome of the performance objective? So in this example, the goal is for the SPED students to, success rate to go from eighteen to twenty-one. So the, the strategy below it should tell us specifically, what are we doing so that we're going to impact that goal? In the measure side, we should be seeing two things, right? We shouldn't be, we, there should be a measure that tells me one thing, is the strategy being implemented? And this example, this is a great example because that's what they're looking for, so they're measuring the process. And then the other question that should be asked is what impact that's actually having on the learning? So one of the things that the principal at Atherton will do is when a CA is given, which we just finished one, she can look and see what the success rate of her SPED students are, and she can, in that review, in that formative review, say, this is where they landed on my CA result, and this is the percentage of time we saw multi-level instruction happening in the classroom. Is there a relationship? And what she'll be able to do then is at the bottom, in the November, January, February, she'll be able to say, we're making some progress, a little progress, we've made a lot of progress, and so we're looking for those two things. And so what, the, the reason after you've adopted the performance objectives, assuming that happens tonight, the principals and the area superintendents will go back to refine their strategies. And one of the things that we're looking for when we provide support to principals is those two things. Does the strategy, is, is there specificity enough for us to know that that's actually going to impact the performance objective? Is there an alignment there? And then is the measure measuring the implementation of the strategy and its impact on kids? And that's the feedback we're giving principals over the next couple of weeks while they finish their plans.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I guess that leans to the question, if we're approving this now, but then they're still sort of evolving, what are we approving?
Tonight, you're approving the performance objectives?
Just the objectives, not the plans.
Yeah, you're not, you're not approving the strategies. The board policy requires us to bring you the performance objectives which have been set now. Once you say, okay, we're good with the goals you've set, then we're going to go back and say, this is what we're going to do to get there.
Okay, cool.
And Ms. Hudson, it's no different than we approved initially the strategic plan, but that's a very fluid, breathing document.
And how they get there is their, their lane. Okay. That makes, that makes a lot of sense. So...
And Ms. Hudson, if I could also add in, what we're seeing is just one little...
A little bit, yeah.
One little piece, not the entire plan for each campus.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
I, I wasn't sure. I was just wanting to make sure that...
Yeah, I just, I'm encouraged by what I'm hearing that this is not a stopping point, that we are measuring the process as well as the end result.
Right. And it's, and I will say, you know, it's a work in progress. Our, our goals, honestly, our goal is to get a little better every year in terms of the quality of the plan because, I'll just speak for myself personally, I'm a firm believer the quality of the plan produces the quality of your outcomes. And so it, it's a matter of, it's a matter of professional learning, not just in, I would say it's pretty consistent in, in systems across the country, specifically in the state where this happens, is trying to figure out how do you design strategies, and then what is a measure supposed to look like that tells you that you're actually making progress or not making progress? And so we're continuing to get professional development around that. We will actually come back to this, that, that kind of training even with principals over the course during the first semester, and then specifically over the next couple of weeks, once the performance objectives, assuming they're approved tonight, the area superintendents will, will be working individually with principals to help them shore up not only their strategy but the measures so that when they do quarterly reviews, we can get a sense whether those strategies are having impact or not. And that allows us at a system level, too, when we see schools that are struggling with, with some certain subgroups who are having lots of success, we can pinpoint, well, what's the strategy they're doing because it's actually listed in their plan? Yeah.
Thank you so much for that clarification.
Thank you, Mrs. Hudson. So two, two quick things without staying on the lights. So on the LEPS students from seventy-five to seventy-seven, can you tell what last year was? What's that? Sorry, my mic is not on. With the LEPS students from seventy-five to seventy-seven on this scorecard, what it looked like last year?
Our, our endpoint was seventy-five. I'd have to tell you what our, what the actual graduation rate was the year before. I don't have that number off the top of my head. I can tell you that right now, the gap between LEPS students and the general population is about almost ten percent. Our graduation rate's a little over, I think it's eighty-four point nine, eighty-four point something. So there's a gap of about ten percent, and that population's significant. But I, I couldn't tell you where our start point off the top of my head was last year. Our ending point was seventy-five.
And I, I know in the initial draft, it was, I think, seventy-five to eighty, and then it was dialed back to the seventy-seven, so...
Yes, so I'll, I'll tell you why that happened. I'm sure that's your question. After we originally went to eighty, we started dialoguing, and the question that, that I needed to figure out was, is it even doable? Because there are two reasons why kids graduate or don't graduate, right? You either have a credit issue, meaning you don't have, you haven't completed the courses, or you haven't passed the EOCs. And depending upon which of those two problems is your issue, you may or may not have enough time to get through that process to actually graduate. So if I'm a student who's struggling with EOCs, then I just have to pass state exams, and then I can graduate. But if my issue is around credits and my credit deficiency is so large that it's impossible for me to recover that in a year, then I'm never, we could put any goal we want, and it's not going to graduate, we weren't going to graduate. So we reflected on that after the fact, and so what we realized was that there was, getting to eighty was going to, was going to be very difficult, and I think it's because of credit issues. So we actually know specifically now which students are struggling and how many credits they actually have in this population. So we know how to actually attack the problem, and so we adjusted the score or to make sure that it was a reachable goal. Eighty would have been really lofty based on the number of credits that many of our LEPS students have gaps around, whereas the current number of seventy-seven is actually attainable. It's, it's, it's a strong goal, but it's, it's within reach.
Very good, yeah, very good. So final question, this is a completely random question, so... Yeah. So with some of the talk around our benchmarks or curriculum assessments or CAS, and this is probably something that Dr. Barlow would, would love to maybe look at or analyze, do you think, or has it been looked at to have, identify perhaps a correlation between those that are graded versus, and the campuses or the classrooms that choose to grade those versus the ones that don't?
What do you grade?
To, some teachers assign a grade...
Oh, I got you.
For the outcome, and others don't.
I thought you meant scoring, I'm like, we score all of them, but I know what you mean.
No, no, no. No, no, no. I, I was wondering if there's...
I hear what you're saying.
Yeah. If there would be any effect on the, the campus strategy goals towards the district performance objectives or not.
And so can I rephrase what I think I hear you say? So whether students are more motivated...
Are you saying I wasn't clear?
Um, are you asking whether students' performance is increased when a grade is taken versus not? Is that basically what we're...
Sure.
I think it's an interesting question that I think many people theorize around. We haven't done any work around that.
That's why I said it would be a Dr. Barlow thing probably that he'd love.
And, and you know, we don't advocate it for it one way or the other.
Right.
But one thing we do do at the district level is, is we do provide them guidance, if they choose to take a grade, around how they do that because our assessments, we create the cut score for passing after the assessments are done. And most people think that that's counterintuitive, like, why would you just say the seventy and call it a seventy? Well, it's the same reason STAR doesn't do that because the way you do test design is you create questions, and the questions are actually ranked by difficulty when you're done. But you don't know where they rank until after kids all take the assessment. And so some questions, when, if everyone's getting them wrong, sometimes are bad questions and you throw them out, and then other times you have questions that are, that, well, then the other questions we know that are good. And so what happens for like the STAR assessment is they do the same thing, they, they create the cut score at the end and they throw certain questions out. And so what we don't want teachers to do is to have an arbitrary score of seventy and use it as a cut point and then give grades because oftentimes the cut point is actually lower than that, and it would cause a lot of kids to, to receive poor grades. And so we make sure that if a teacher's going to assign a grade, that we give them a way to do that that's fair and reasonable so that the student's performance on the assessment is actually articulated in terms of mastery on the grade they're assigning. So I will ask him, I'll say, Dr. Raj would like you to conduct a study. No, I'm just kidding. No, I, I think it's an interesting question. I, I think part of the challenge, I'll just speak for myself, around advocating one way or the other is only because... just speak for myself, around advocating one way or the other, is only because the purpose of the assessments are, even though they're summative, they're also formative in nature. And what we're trying to do is gather a sense of how kids are mastering without creating additional anxiety around the impact that that CA may or may not have on their grade point average. And so we kind of leave that to the teachers. But I don't know whether it actually produces a different result or not. That's an interesting question.
All right. Well, thank you for indulging me on that one. So, no further lights. So we have a motion on the table to approve the 2017-18 Campus Performance Objectives and District Scorecard. Please vote. Motion passes. All right. Moving on, next, we have items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Any items trustees wish to withdraw or consider separately, Mrs. Mays?
Yes, I would like to withdraw a proposal, or number 18-20, the CSP for Hill and Swift Elementary School renovations.
Okay. Okay. There's only those two items, so I bet there's not another one, then. Okay. Ms. Powell, please share bid.
President Raj, board members, Dr. Cavassos, good evening. With that item that was just removed from consent, that leaves one bid on the consent agenda for your approval. And in that case, we are recommending the bids that represent the best value to the district.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda, less item 18-20?
Move to accept.
I have a motion to accept. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. A motion by Mr. Hibbs, second by Mr. Chapa, to accept the consent agenda, accept item 18-20. Didn't see no discussion?
I thought that was the one that was pulled.
Yes, accept item.
With the exception, okay.
Please vote. Consent passes. Ms. Mays?
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Cindy, I just had a couple of questions on the competitive seal proposal 18-20. For the, for general contractors that we receive proposals from, do we keep track of where those contractors received the information for the bid? For instance, we, you say that notification, we send it out to area chambers, local contractors, DFW Minority Business Council. Do we keep track of where the, do we ask the contractors where did they hear or get the information, so we know for the places that we're advertising, where we're able to gather the most?
No, we have not been tracking that information.
Okay. Is that something you see could be beneficial?
We can start doing that.
Okay. And then my second question, for our rubric that we're using once again for price qualifications, hub participation, and interviews, I'm noticing now that our hub score, which is 10% of the total, now they all look like they're saying 10, that everybody's getting 100% of the 10%. Or at least in this case, that's what happened. Then I look at the percentage of the hub commitment, and I see 20, 20, 20, and then 32%. So if 20 got the full 10% and 32 got the full 10%, are we now hitting a minimum where if you hit that number, you get the full 10?
Our matrix has always given points, graduated scale, and so over the threshold at or above 20, you get 10 points.
Okay. So are we then implying that 20 or 20% is our goal to hit for our percentage of hub participation for our contractors?
We haven't stated that as a goal, have not even implied that as a goal. That's just as we have looked for points, places along a continuum, if you will, to, for scoring purposes. That's where we've made that highest break.
Okay. So we're not stating that it's a goal, a district goal, but we are stating that if you, if you commit to at least 20% of using hub, that you will get a 10% of our scores of 10?
That's correct.
Correct, okay. Those are my questions.
Yes, Ms. Hudson?
Just following Ms. Mays' line of questioning, do we have any information on these contractors on their prior hub participation at this time?
On these, we have worked with Imperial on another construction contract, and that's the only one of the four that we have done bond work with, I believe, at this point. And so I can't tell you off the top of my head what their hub participation is. We can get that for you. But we do track that.
Yeah, I know we track it, and I think we asked this on the last one, and we just didn't have any information from the contractors that submitted bids. But I'm curious if we're going to start working that into the rubric when we do have that information. So for instance, if they promised 20 on the last one and they promised 20 on this one, but it was only 8%?
And we have been scoring them individually, scoring them down if they have not been performing. I can tell you that, I know, I personally, as I've scored valuations, if they had not already demonstrated their commitment, have scored them down.
That might be helpful to see in future consent agenda items. Does anyone else think so? If we have that information, including that?
We may have to, we'll work on the presentation.
Thank you. Okay, so before we vote, do I need to put on record that I am requesting that the district start capturing information or data as to where these contractors are seeing the information that we're putting out?
I think that's part of what their process is.
No, she said they didn't do it. But I'm, she said if we, she said they could do it. So I'm wanting to request that they do do that.
I, I think it would be a pulse of the board and probably something better worked through the committee process, so that staff and everybody has a chance to dialogue versus right here, right now.
Okay, so I'll just give it in my secretary report.
Yes.
And I think the same request of Ms. Hudson's.
Yes. Okay. Okay, so we have this item still being considered separate. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Hudson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hibbs. Any further discussion? And please vote. Motion carries. Okay. Moving on, the next item is a discussion item. Because of the time, we're considerably over where our target was, unless somebody has an overwhelming desire, I think we will move that 2014 bond program update to our next meeting, since it's a discussion item. Unless Ms. Powell is really interested, then, no. Okay, so we'll, we'll go ahead and, and move that over then to our next, next meeting. And so that brings us to our open forum for non-agenda items. I do not see any cards, so we will move on to superintendent's report.
No report.
No report. Any school board members with a report? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, I know we've got some items to consider.
Yes, I believe we have two items to consider. One is to, well, I guess both requests would be for us to pass to a subcommittee of the board reviewing the request of the district to provide the data of where our contractors that are submitting proposals receive their information. And two, to be a part of the documentation of the rubric as to prior participation, hub participation percentage that was quoted by a contract we've done work with, if they have kept or did not keep, if they fell below what they committed to.
Okay. Okay. Very good. I believe earlier, Ms. Hudson, you also had a request to follow up on what, on which personnel were receiving emergency training in the school safety audit? Is that correct, or not?
It was more along the lines of, is asthma, allergy, what kind of training are they receiving?
What kind of training?
I have it written down. Hold on, I can reference it for you. Give me a sec.
Well, that's fine. If you can just provide that to Mr. Hill or somebody afterwards.
I can.
That's great. Okay. Well, very good. Then it is 10:05, and we are not going into closed, so this meeting is adjourned.